Good evening, and welcome to the Tempe City Council Meeting for August 30th, 2018 here in the Area Emergency Government Center. For all those that are able, could you please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Just some thoughts and prayers with the McCain family as well this day. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next is our meeting minutes. Vice Mayor QB.
Move to approve 3A, 1, 2, and 3?
Moved by Council, Vice Mayor QB, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Vice Mayor QB.
Move to approve 3B, 1 through 12.
Moved by Vice Mayor QB. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is, I have some reports and announcements, and I'll come down to the... Well, we have another Tempe wave maker here in the city, as well as in his council chambers here, that I'd like to acknowledge today. Before I call up Brian to the podium to speak to us, or before I actually introduce something about Brian, I want you all to please watch this great video.
I'm Brian Rambo, and I'm an American Ninja Warrior. About four years ago, we had built a chicken coop for a friend of ours, and they actually make climbing holds. So, in exchange for the chicken coop that we built for them, they built us part of a climbing wall. Over time, with my involvement, the kids getting better, it's a big piece of the house that everyone who comes over plays on. I ended up applying for the TV show because my wife told me I had to do it, and that it would be super awesome if I actually got picked. And I made a video over Christmas break, and I got selected. You know, I didn't have a lot of time to overthink. There was a lot of adrenaline involved, and I just did what I do, and I ran through the course. I didn't look down. I just looked straight forward to that buzzer. When I first started this journey, all I wanted to do was run a course, run some of these real obstacles, and have fun. And to end up taking first place in the L.A. City Qualifiers was just unimaginable. It was awesome. After I got involved in the sport, and I saw the community that's involved with the ninja sport, it really made me want to start my own gym, and have a place where we could actually get some real obstacles going, open it up to all ages, and just have a lot of fun. I love seeing people try things, and I love seeing people accomplish it from start to finish. So, I mean, it's amazing when somebody gets up and tries something they've never tried before, and the excitement that they see and they feel when they can do it, or even when they can't do it. But they're just laughing even when they fall, because it's so much fun, and everyone is so supportive. Well, you know, I'm still just Brian. I still do what I do here in Tempe, in my day-to-day, swinging around like a monkey and being an adult kid.
Brian, did the team come out? The rest of the council come down? I understand you have some practice equipment that we're all gonna try?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Just kidding. I'd like to read a proclamation on behalf of the city of Tempe. Where it states, "Brian Rambo was selected from more than 7,000 athletes who auditioned for the TV show American Ninja Warrior. And whereas Brian Rambo had the fastest time of the night on the Los Angeles City Qualifier course, it was one of nine people to compete the Los Angeles City Finals course. And whereas Brian Rambo represents the great abilities of our Tempe sports community, in the same spirit as our Ironman Triathletes, our Sun Devils Athletics, and all those who strive to be their best. And now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as August 30th, as Brian Rambo, American Ninja Warrior Day in Tempe, Arizona." On a more serious note, today we are bringing awareness to Suicide Prevention Month, and for this, I'd like to call to the stage Chris Charler from our CARE7. We have Lori Robinsons, Hillary Cummings, La, for Terra, La, for Terra for Impact, which is Patricia Inezies. The city through, the city, through our Human Services Department and community partners have been providing resources to prevent suicide in Tempe. I want to thank all of you for all of your hard work, for this important and necessary work. And for that, I'd like to read a proclamation. It says, "Suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, and a third leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 to 14, and a second leading cause of death for people ages 15 to 24. Whereas in the United States, suicide rates went up more than 30% since 1999, and Arizona has seen an increase of 6% to 18%. And whereas in 2016, Arizona experienced 1,271 deaths by suicide, ranking it 17th among states nationally. And whereas the city of Tempe is committed to the well-being of our residents, and have a committed human services department that provides direct services to individuals in crisis and families affected by suicide. And whereas CARE7's crisis response team works with Tempe's police, fire, and medical rescue to respond to mental health calls, and connects with individuals experiencing suicide ideation. And whereas through CARE17, high-quality, low-cost counseling services can be assessed by all community members. And whereas the city partners with many organizations and community organizations and school districts in order to provide continuum of care and focus on suicide prevention, and intervention, and advocacy, and support of awareness. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare September 20, September 2018 as a National Suicide Prevention Month in Tempe, Arizona." Next, we are still encouraging our community members to volunteer for the 2020 U.S. Census Complete Count Committee. This committee will help complete, ensure that our city gets the most accurate count of our residents. We need folks that can bring valuable perspectives or expertise in reaching diverse audiences. I would also like to encourage my fellow council colleagues to help share this opportunity, which they have, along with staff members that are liaisons to our boards and commission members. I'd like to see representation from our boards on this committee as well. We have more information on this committee that will be, that will be sending out, and we'll be doing the application form online. You can visit it at www.tep.gov/cityhall/census. It's really important that we are able to count all the residents in our community, because that does help us, not only for congressional redistricting, but also in terms of state revenues and allocation that we receive from the state. So, that's all I have for right now. Mr. Mayor, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I do have a couple of announcements, a couple of retirements of long-tenured employees that I wanted to announce and recognize them for their service. First, we received word that Cecilia Robles, our Director of the Office of Management and Budget, our Office of Budget, will be retiring. Her career with City of Tempe spans over 34 years. With Tempe, she's not here tonight, I don't think. I don't see her in the audience, unless I'm missing her, or maybe she doesn't want to be recognized. But too late, I've already mentioned her. So, she will be retiring in first of, part of October. Also, Mari Yeni, who has almost 30 years of experience working in the fire department, started as a COE in high school, worked for the city attorney's office for many years, left, started working in city hall as a council aide for several years, came back to the city attorney's office, has also announced her retirement in September. I've known both of these individuals for a very long part of their career. They're both a pleasure to work with. They are outstanding city employees and outstanding human beings, and I'm gonna miss them both a lot, but I'm gonna wish them great success in their retirement and in all their future endeavors. So, thank you.
Thank you. With that, the next item on our agenda is our Consent Agenda. All the items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group, and will be enacted with one motion by the city council, unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public-carrying items for separate consideration. Just so everyone knows, public-carrying items on the agenda are designated by an asterisk. If, council members may remove any item for separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on a public-carrying item, please fill out a speaker's card located at the back of the council chambers, and give it to the deputy city clerk. I'll call your name, and it's your turn for public comment. The Consent Agenda is as follows. Miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A11. Just so I, I'd like to make a note that 5A4 has been removed or deleted from the agenda at the request of staff. Awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B8. Resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C5. Again, any agenda item that is marked with an asterisk is a public-carrying item, and it can't be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public-carrying item removed, could you please get my attention? See none? Is there any? With that, I'm now turning to my colleagues. Is there any agenda items that you'd like to have removed on the Consent Agenda? I know we're gonna, we're gonna actually remove... 5A7 has been requested to be removed. The next one is... Is there any else from the council that you'd like to have removed for separate consideration? Councilman Granville?
Thank you, Mayor. 5B1.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
5A8?
Anyone else from the council? Have you anything else? All right. So, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as read except for items 5A7, 5A8, and 5B7?
I'm sorry, and 5B1 as well?
And 5B1. Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Adams. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Granville. Please vote.
And that vote was approved 7 to 0?
That vote passes 7 to 0. I'm trying to get all the cards sorted out. All right. Now we're gonna move item 5A7, that has been removed, and that is, "Approve an amended subdivision plot for the Idea Tempe located at 1,000 West Rio Salado Parkway. The applicant is Boyer." I don't, I don't want to remove that one. I thought someone wanted 5A7. Okay? It's been a motion to approve 5A7. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved by Councilman Arredondo Savage, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Vote, please vote. That motion passes 7 to 0. Next is item 5A8, which is to approve a final subdivision plot for the NEC Baseline Road and Roosevelt Street Retail located at 660 and 616 West Baseline Road. The applicant is Three Engineering LLC. Yes, Councilmember QB, or Vice Mayor QB?
And that one I did remove. I just wanted to call Shelley to the stand to ask you some questions. I know we've received a number of emails from residents in the area concerned about, about traffic, and about exiting, entering the division, the business plan, so I was hoping you could address some of the concerns. And also, there was a request from a few residents to have a traffic signal placed there 500 feet west of the current traffic signal. I was just hoping you could educate us about it.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Shelley Seiler, Deputy Public Works Director for Transportation. So, this request is for the two drive-through facilities. They're about 2,000 square feet, I believe, each. We did receive some analysis regarding trip generation from the consultant, and it is expected to generate... We typically would look at the peak hour to make sure that it isn't impacting that. There are about 250 PM peak hour trips generated, and 150 in the AM. One of the things to note about drive-through facilities is that they tend to generate more pass-by trips, so they don't necessarily generate a destination, aren't necessarily a destination, meaning they're not generating new trips on the system. So, somebody who may be going to work or coming home may stop in at the drive-through, say the Starbucks, for example, to grab a cup of coffee or something. So, that's one thing that we also look at. We have worked with the developer to minimize the number of trips that we would be making a right out of the driveway on Roosevelt. That is being done through the placement of a median island in the middle of the street. They've demonstrated to us that a single movement could not occur when, if a vehicle were trying to make a right turnout. We do feel comfortable with that as mitigation to limit the number of trips going to the north. With regard to the traffic signal, you are all aware that we look at the federal warrants for the signal. There's a certain number of trips that would be required on that portion of Roosevelt in order to warrant that. We do not feel that that, those number of trips would be generated by this development. I also did look at the crash history along Baseline Road between Kyrene and Roosevelt. During the last three years, there were no fatal or serious injury crashes, which we look through, as you know, with Vision Zero to address. There were four crashes at Roosevelt and Baseline in the last three years, and none of those resulting in injuries. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Thank you. And the mayor made a good point, that actually the entire project for the zoning map amendment and development plan review is going to be the first hearing tonight later on. So, I kind of preempted the discussion, but it's a related issue here. So, you can have it again. I can call you up again. But thank you.
Go ahead. Are you gonna approve that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
There's been a motion to approve items 5A7. It's been seconded? I mean, 5A8? It's been a motion to approve 5A8, and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion passes 7 to 0. Next is items 5B1, which is to approve a conversion of a 30-hour part-time legal services to position adjusted to one, or I'm sorry, 5B1. It's awarded professional services contract to Dick and Fritchy Design Group for the modernization and remodel of City Hall Complex projected, or project located at 31 East 5th Street. Councilmember Granville?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item for a design group for the modernization, the sorely needed modernization of remodel of City Hall Complex. The reason I pulled this was, so, over the last five or six years, there's been, we've gotten increasingly better and better information from staff about how they select vendors, which is great. Unfortunately, that also means that sometimes that causes more questions than it answers. In this case, there was a panel of six that looked at all of the applicants. There were 15 applicants, and the spread between the scores was pretty wide. So, there are examples, and I'll just mention a few, where, in the case of Holly Street, one panel member scored them as their number-one choice after the review, and another scored them as their 13.5 choice, their last choice, as part of their review. In another case, in the case of Gensler, they were one panel member's second choice, and that same panel member had them as their last choice, another panel member. And so, you see these variations where Arrington Watkins was the number-one choice for two different panelists, but was one of the last choices, was the nine-and-a-half choice for another panelist. That is a little bit concerning, because what that means is that we're really looking at things that maybe are, I wouldn't say subjective, but, but subject to a great deal of subjectivity based on your experience and your whatever. And so, if you look at the scoring criteria, which is just above the chart, 30% of your score is your understanding of the project. I'm not exactly sure how you measure that, but I could see why a panelist would rate one group first, and another panelist might rate them last. 30% approach to performing the services. 35%, and this one actually does make sense, presentation and in-depth discussion through question-and-answer sessions, and then 5% overall evaluation of the proposed firm and its ability to provide the required services. I assume we've been doing it this way for a long time. I've just never seen variations like this before. When I asked staff what the reasons were for the variations, the response I got, which was, I mean, it was an earnest response, was the selection panel is, has people of widely differing backgrounds, engineers, architects, communications, city management facilities. I think the thing that I would ask, or at least suggest in the way of feedback, is that when you see variations like this, I would hope that we'd have maybe more objective criteria, so where if reasonable minds differed, there was a more grounded basis in an objective sense of what those differences are. I would expect to see one person scores them a five, and other groups scores them third, or seventh, and tenth, or, I get that. That's sort of natural variation, because reasonable minds can differ. But when you see someone scored first and last by the same panel members, I don't know if there's an answer to this, but I, it definitely gave me pause, and in maybe just a more formal way, I would ask. If you want to address it, you're welcome to, but I think what I'd really hope is maybe you would just come back with a more formalized discussion of why this is the best way to do it, or if there's a better way to do it.
Welcome, Marilyn.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Granville. I'm Marilyn Derosa. I'm the Deputy Public Works Director for the Engineering Division and the City Engineer, and we do the Title 34 procurement for professional services. And Councilmember Granville, in this case, you're right, there was a wide variety of scores, ranking by the various members, but the, when, with respect to, and we make it as subjective as possible based on the experience of the firm.
Objective, slightly.
Yes.
Okay.
Objective as possible.
Yeah.
Based on the, thank you for correcting me. Based on the experience of the firm, the similar projects that they've completed in the past, of similar size, of similar scope, and, and as recently as possible. So, there are a variety of criteria that we use, and depending on the specialty of the panelist, the scoring will vary. If, when we find wide variations, the panel meets, and we want to ensure that we didn't miss something, that a panelist didn't observe or recognize something in the proposal that the rest of the panel missed. So, we have a conversation, and we ask each of the panelists, particularly when we see wide variations like that, we ask each of the panelists, "What did you see in the, in the proposal that the rest of us didn't potentially see?" Or, "Should we be looking at this differently?" We have a conversation to ensure that everybody's comfortable with the rankings that, that they, the scores they created and the rankings that they provided, and then use those, as long as everyone's comfortable with how the ultimate out, the ultimate outcome of the scores, then we move forward. We try not to change people's rankings, because we want it to be as objective as possible.
I appreciate that. And I appreciated your response you provided earlier in the week as well. Is it that there are more refined scoring numbers, and the things I'm seeing, the four that I see, are the summaries? Because I would understand, for example, if one of the scoring criteria was similarly-sized projects within a five-year period.
Right.
That is a really pretty objective sort of thing you could do. But that's not what I see? So, is that a subthing that I'm just not seeing as part of the process?
Oh, right. We have some, that's a good question, Councilmember Granville. The, we have a sheet that each panelist receives that is some instructions, a list of things that to consider as they score under each criteria. And those are the kinds of details that are in that instruction sheet that don't appear on your RIFCA. But we have more detailed, each of the criteria identified here have a little more detail in our instruction sheet.
And is that instruction sheet sort of a paragraph, or is it a series of like boxes that you fill in? Like, for example, if it was a series of, you know, like, there's a small paragraph, and one of the things listed there is similar projects of similar scope. Well, okay, it's in a larger paragraph, it might get lost, but if that were a spot in a larger chart of scoring, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, they're bullet points.
Okay.
So, there are bullet points, and then each panelist, depending on their specialization, each panelist is free to take that total number of points and distribute it amongst the bullets as they see fit. We don't prescribe the number of points per bullet under the general category.
Okay. I don't know what to do from here. I'm certainly open to suggestions, but I just, it's just, they're really wide variations in a way that suggests, like, more than reasonable minds differing in an objective sort of review.
And Mayor, council members, I've been doing this for long enough that I have, I have some idea of how to distribute points per bullet, and perhaps what we could do is revise our guidance sheet to make some suggestions for the other panelists.
I would certainly defer to you as an expert on this. I mean, I'm just wandering into this discussion.
Yeah.
But whatever you think's appropriate to maybe try and help with this, I would certainly appreciate it. What I don't want to have happen, just to be clear, is for you guys to sort of solve the problem by telling people, like, "Keep Granville quiet, let's make our numbers closer." Like, that I don't want to have happen. But whatever you think is the right way to maybe help people, because sometimes maybe the instructions aren't clear, maybe the, there's all sorts of ways that this can happen, and if there are ways you can help that, I would really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just so I'm clear...
If I may, just so I'm clear, certainly, we're always looking for process improvement, and we as staff talk about these things on a regular basis. In terms of the specific, if there is in fact direction that Councilmember Granville is suggesting, as is our practice at both work-study session and other situations where staff is essentially receiving direction from a council, I just want to ensure that whatever that direction is, is, represents a majority of the council giving that consensus.
Okay. Councilmember Keating?
Mayor, I motion we approve item 5B1.
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right.
And make a note that I'm okay with the process the way it is.
Okay. There's been a motion for item 5B1 by Councilmember Keating. There's been a motion to second it by Councilmember Robin Armando Savage. Any other discussion? Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. Next is items 5B7. It's to approve the utilization of a one-year U.S. Communities Cooperative Contract with Amazon Services LSE for an online marketplace for miscellaneous products that are not available from contracted suppliers. I'm going to ask, it has been removed for several consideration. Before I ask staff to present, I want to thank members of our public for engaging the city on this, that had shared their concerns, because on this particular topic, this is exactly what makes Tempe a very unique and open and cooperative community. And I think it makes Tempe a very special city by listening to our residents and getting that input. And I do want to make sure that our staff, I've been talking with staff, I know some of my council colleagues have been talking with our staff, and they're going to talk about some of the practices and where we go from here, and then we're going to open up to the council, and then we'll talk about seeing some public comments from the audience. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Ken Jones, Deputy City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, and we appreciate the opportunity to brief you on what is before you tonight on the agenda. I have with me here tonight Rini Broderick, our Internal Services Director, and Michael Green, our manager of our procurement office. So the city makes a great effort to attract and retain local businesses. That's a cornerstone of one of the council's priorities, and we have done that for quite a while. And in that same vein, the procurement office makes a great effort to ensure that our spending occurs that way, and the policies that have been in place for a while have been effective. 89% of what the city spends is spent within the state of Arizona. 82% is spent within Maricopa County, and more than a quarter of everything we spend is spent here in the city of Tempe. That's based on the last analysis we did of the city of Tempe's spend. So what's being proposed tonight? The procurement office is proposing a contractual relationship with Amazon that allows us to better manage our expending with Amazon. Our departments have a pretty wide authority when it comes to expenditures under $5,000. They have a lot of flexibility in where they go, but we know they have an incentive to spend the least amount and get the most, so that they can spread their budgets and do the best for the community. So we know that that happens. But we also know that the Amazon model has created products, pricing, delivery, and those types of incentives that have incentivized our employees sometimes to purchase products that should have been purchased from contractual partners that we have, for example, office supplies. We haven't been able to control that as well as we should, because we don't have, under $5,000, the direction you have is to get the best price you can for the product that's right for the city. So what we're proposing tonight, the contractual relationship, will allow us to actually block those expenditures with Amazon. We tell Amazon, eliminate purchases of office supplies from our contract with you. Our employees now can't use a procurement card to buy office supplies from Amazon, because we already have a contract, and similarly in other categories. So that, that's one of the benefits. The contract also has free Amazon Prime and free delivery associated with it. We also know, though, and because a great article was written by the Institute of Local Self-Reliance, and it points out what I think is a tremendous flaw in this contract. This contract is treated like a cooperative contract, which you're familiar with. City of Mesa goes out and competes for a contract, and we piggyback on that. This is treated as a cooperative contract, but in a different way, and what they're saying is, you don't need other competitors. Amazon, in and of itself, provides enough competition through their dynamic pricing model. We think that's a flaw. We have not used that, and we will not use that. We think that's a flaw in that contract. There's actually a great article written by the Institute of Local Self-Reliance. I'd like to read a part of that article. It says, "We're not suggesting that local government never buy from Amazon. At times, it may offer the most convenient and cost-effective option. We are, however, suggesting that cities pay attention to the shift in public purchasing that is occurring as Amazon is becoming a bigger force in the public sector, and do so in a way that accounts for the full costs of shifting a share of their spending to this company. Local governments have several options for how to do this. One is to simply keep a close eye on their purchasing, especially for smaller-value purchases that are made on P-cards, procurement cards. Communicate clear standards that any vendor has to meet." The article goes on to quote a purchasing director in a city that the article lauds for doing the right thing, and that quote is, "We are stewards of taxpayer dollars, so you want to make sure that you're getting the best deal possible and having the most competition possible." We agree with this. This is what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is control our local, control our small spending and give our local vendors the same, put them on the same playing field, not purchase off an Amazon contract merely because their pricing implies competition. We don't believe that. So Michael and Rini are going to talk to you about some of the other practices that we already have in place to encourage local spending, but, but we think this contract will help us block some of those expenditures that we are trying to control on Amazon. So which of you is in?
Me. Thank you, Ken. Just to kind of reiterate a little bit, I want you to know that actually procurement staff brought this to my attention last year, a concern around how much money we were spending on Amazon, and starting to look at what we needed to do to understand the spend. And that's what led the procurement staff to the U.S. Communities contract, because it has some elements that are helpful in terms of understanding and controlling the spend. As Ken mentioned, we can block certain vendors or certain items, we can put controls in. So that was the intent in going with the U.S. Communities contract. And what has been interesting about that is that we've really learned that we have some opportunities to be more judicious in how we spend the city's money, and we've discovered, as Ken mentioned, the office supply contract. We also have a contract for furniture, and we discovered that people were buying items off of Amazon when we have a furniture contract. So those are things that we have been able to put blocks in place now, because we have that arrangement now with Amazon, that we can do that. So we can make sure that staff is not purchasing, and no one does it intentionally, it's, I think it's just sort of a convenience thing, but this way staff can inadvertently not use one of our competitively bid contracts. So we think that's a really important thing. We've been also doing a lot of education with staff, so they understand and remain aware of the importance of local spend also. When we're out there, there's a lot of items that staff can purchase that are under the procurement limits, so the staff has discretion, and we want to make sure that they're aware that there are local opportunities for spending City of Tempe money. So that's another piece that's been very helpful. The other thing that we've noticed is there are some commodities that we are actually buying enough of, and frankly, I was surprised, for example, toys. We purchased in the first six months of this year about $8,500 worth of toys, and that's an opportunity, I think, for us to look at a competitively bid situation. So this has been very helpful for us to see where the money is being spent and what we can do to be more efficient in how we spend. But Michael is the expert on what we do with our local initiatives, so I'm going to turn it over to him to explain that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, along with, you know, our procurement office and our engineering division, along with diversity, we really do try to make an effort to get out and market Tempe's opportunities to the local suppliers. And in addition to the numbers that Mr. Jones noted about our percent of spend, I think those are very compelling, but also when you look at our registration list, so we have a self-registration list for interested suppliers to register and make their interest known, and we have about 300 commodity codes, and when you look at that list, it's a national database, so anybody can register under that list throughout the country. And out of that list, 15% of the total registered list is Tempe-based suppliers. So we think that's a good measure to look at, to make sure that we are actively getting firms to register with Tempe, so they are receiving notices and opportunities for bids. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely. You know, Tempe's a dynamic place, new vendors, new suppliers are coming in, we want to make sure we're addressing the existing suppliers, so we're always looking to improve that. One way we do that is through aligning ourselves with some of the business and trade associations. And so we've got, we are members and good partners with the Pacific Southwest Minority Supplier Development Council, the Associated Minority Contractors of Arizona. We host a number of outreach events with those organizations. In fact, we hosted two this past June, one at the Tempe Center for the Arts and one at the Tempe Public Library, where we not only had Tempe representatives there to show how to do business with Tempe, but we had other large public agencies attend with us to try to further leverage those opportunities for the interested parties. And Local First Arizona is a group that we've worked with, and we worked with them specifically on a webinar on how to do business with the public sector. Tempe Chamber of Commerce has always been a partner for us. In fact, we've linked their supplier database to our internal website, so our buyers can research that to check for membership. We develop bids and get ready to develop a list that goes out to market an opportunity. We check that list to make sure that we're capturing Tempe firms. And we're also partners with the Small Business Administration here in Arizona. So we've done a lot of networking events. In fact, Tempe collaborated to establish the first Maricopa-wide supplier outreach event for the public sector that's now become a standard annual event that the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing hosts. And at that event, we've hosted it twice in the last five years, and we've had, you know, upwards of 700 attendees come to this event, where we've had 45 public agencies in Maricopa County represent as well. So I think we are trying to make sure that our opportunities are out there for local businesses. Again, we're always looking for ways to improve that as well.
So just to summarize, Mayor, I would say that, you know, I think that we're doing exactly, almost exactly what the Institute of Local Self-Reliance has dictated. We are keeping a close eye on small purchases, specifically those made by procurement cards, and we're creating an environment with the most competition possible. That's, that's our, our goal, and I know we've been a little wordy on this particular agenda item, but when you start throwing Amazon and contracts with Amazon on an agenda, I think it deserves some, some explanation to the city council, so that it doesn't appear that we're trying to drive business away from our local, our local owners of businesses. We're actually trying to help them.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that. And I just want to reassure, I mean, the city, by nature, is an advocate for our businesses in our community, and we care very much about the local businesses in our community, as was mentioned. And I think accountability, looking at how we can control our spending and refine our process, all very important attributes to our procurement code, and I want to thank that. I do have, if it's the council's pleasure, I, we pulled this out the agenda, I think it's only right to have our public have some comments. I do have some cards, and then we can have a discussion. Is that okay? All right. I do have one from Thomas Barr. And just so you guys know, please state your name, place of residence, or record, and you have a three-minute time limit.
Thank you. Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Thomas Barr. I live at 1231 East Malibu Drive in Tempe, Arizona. I'm an Arizona native and 12-year Tempe resident, and I'm currently the Executive Director at Local First Arizona. First, I want to take a minute to just thank council and staff for everything you have done already to support the local businesses in Tempe and in Arizona. I think that it is highly credible to this city on the stand that they've already taken to source their office products from WIS to office supplies, to make small businesses a priority in this community. However, at this time, we are seeing a new trend among the giant of Amazon to try to take control of more spending of cities throughout the entire country. The report that was named by city staff from the Institute of Local Self-Reliance actually names that Amazon has extracted about $500 million of city spending across the country, and that's why we think that this is really important for council to consider in the next steps that staff take. That $150,000 that's being recommended as a cap from what city staff would spend with Amazon is a contribution to that $500 million that would be leaked out of Tempe and spent with a huge giant monopoly that's trying to take control of our spending. I know that all of you support locally-owned businesses in this city. Many of you are small business owners, and it's just a really, really big opportunity right now for Tempe to take a stand and be a leader in this moment, to show other cities throughout the country that it can be done, to shift more spending to locally-owned businesses, because that $150,000 with Amazon probably isn't a big deal to them, but it would be a big deal to the businesses in this community. In that same report from the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, they actually found that the city of Phoenix, which, as you know, is, has a larger budget than this city here, spent only $700 with Amazon in 2016 and $0 with Amazon in 2017. As much as I love this city, I know that if the city of Phoenix can do it, that Tempe can do it too. And at the end of every day, local control is right here in our city. The economy is not run out of Washington, it's run out of the dollars that we spend right here in Tempe. And I think that it would be huge for the city of Tempe to take a stand and move to show that other cities across the country can shift their spending more away from Amazon and to locally-owned businesses. Thank you very much for this opportunity tonight, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. Next, Gail Shanks.
Oh, hi, all of you that I know and a few of you that I haven't met yet, and thank you to the city representatives here tonight. You've taken a lot of the words out of my mouth, which I totally love and appreciate. I am, as Mayor Mitchell was mentioning, one of those citizens who feels like she can bring something to the city council and to the people that work for the city, and somebody listens, and I think that's a really important thing. And not only did you listen, but you also read what I sent along as attachments, many of which were very long. And so I totally appreciate that, because I know you've got a lot of work to do and you've got a lot of issues. I think, you know, without going over the stuff that Thomas just talked to you about, my big issue really is Amazon itself. Amazon is a huge organization, it's monopolizing much of the country as well as the world, and I think that when they're presenting a contract to cities and Prince William decides that they're going to bring other cities into this contract, that we really have to look closely as a city to ask ourselves, what exactly does that mean? What does that contract really give us? And are there opportunities and options to buying anything from Amazon? Is it possible to buy elsewhere? So I think that's, for me, is the big question, and so I'm just going to ask you tonight, as briefly as I can, to just consider perhaps delaying this decision. You know, this decision was brought before the council, it was on the consent agenda, it was pulled off, which I totally appreciate, so we could have the conversation, but I think it's a much bigger issue, and what I'd like to suggest is perhaps a task force be put together with, and I'm volunteering right here, even though I have a lot of things that I'm already doing with the city and for the city and my business, but I would be happy to sit with some of you on the council and some of you working for the city and just explore what other options are. You know, even my friends, I was telling someone, you know, my sister buys on Amazon sometimes. I walked up to her house, and there was an Amazon box, and I'm like, my sister, my very own sister is buying from Amazon, and so sometimes I think that education piece just isn't done as well, including myself, as possible. But there's a little app you can put on your computer called WikiBuy, and that app will pop up every time you look at something on Amazon and say, would you like to get it a little cheaper? Here's a coupon, or here's another place that you can get it for much cheaper. So, you know, I just think that there's a lot of things to explore. Jeff Bezos, again, you know, I've never met the man, but if I ever do, boy, look out, is all I want to tell him. But monopolies come back to bite us in the end, and allowing him to dictate to government and schools buying policies, I think is not a good idea. Things appear cheaper on the surface, but in the long run, they could be more costly, and I think I just want the city to be considering that possibility.
Your time's up.
Yep.
See the red light? You have a red light in front of you, too, I think.
Oh, I didn't look, I'm sorry. Thank you. And I didn't tell you where I went.
Yes, councilmember, or Vice Mayor Cubey.
I have a question for you, Gail, and thank you so much for being here. And we had had this discussion earlier, and I had the chance to speak with Ken Jones and ask him the same question, but your very good question, I thought, was if one of the chief benefits of working with this Amazon contract is that we have this ability to block spending from occurring and to chart our spending, is Amazon the only procurement tool that's like that out there in the marketplace? Are there other tools? And did you want to elaborate on that question, and perhaps?
Well, I think one of the selling points that I Well, I think one of the selling points that Amazon has made to cities is that they can have this procurement platform that you can plug in the amounts that is being spent, and then they can give you an accounting at the end of the year. You spent this amount on stationery, this amount on office or on janitorial supplies, this amount on books. And I was just asking Councilman Cubey if there was the possibility that there was another platform that could give you that same information that didn't, you know, rope in Amazon to do that. And so I just wondered if other cities in the country have other procurement platforms that they can use.
Mayor, council, ma'am, we can certainly look at that. You know, the, the idea behind the Amazon solution is that you can examine that spend very carefully and be able to see it with high visibility about what we're spending. I'm not sure where else we could, where we could get a tool to be able to peer into that account like that. But certainly what our goal is, is like was mentioned, is we want to take a deeper dive in those numbers and extract where we think we can. And so we, we definitely want to actively review the Amazon spend and see where we can bring local suppliers in. That would be our direction and our, our request with council is, that would be our approach. Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
I don't have any other cards for this item. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us on this item? Could you please get my attention? Any comments or discussion? Yes. Oh, wait. Yes, please go forward, state your, you have to come up here. State your name and place of residence with a record.
Frank McCall, I live 401 East Marigold Lane in Tempe. I have a question to the procurement people. You mean that you don't track all this procurement information automatically? I've never known a government that didn't track this procurement information and couldn't tell you exactly how you were spending stuff. So just my question, we don't do that now? You don't do that?
Yes, we actually do, sir. I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood the question. But we do keep track of all of our spend through our internal controls. So we can do query reports on our P-card spend, our procurement card spend. We can run reports on our purchase order spend. And so we have great analytics through our IT department that's helped us to be able to look at the information that we have. But when it comes to Amazon, we can review, all of that is through P-cards. And so we do have the ability to review the P-card spend through Amazon. But the information that we get is only as good as the, the cardholder inputs into their reconciliation notes when they reconcile their P-card. So the Amazon's report that we get is much more detailed. So we can actually drill down to more specifics to know what we're buying from Amazon.
Okay, but I mean, then, then your problem is that you're just not inputting that data correctly. That's the issue.
That's, that's a fair point. You know, the information is there, it's just we get greater detail to look inside the Amazon report.
I would also comment, sir, that, that, great comments. And I would comment that any information that we gather is then analyzed, compiled, and we look at it later. And by the time we get it and we analyze it, the spending is done. It's nice to have a proactive tool that says, just you can't buy office products. We don't want to find out next month after we get your procurement card from the bank that you spent it on office products, and then after we analyze it, we get back to you. It's just a more proactive tool. We're not saying this is the only solution. You are absolutely correct. Data analysis on our part provides a great solution, and, and that's true. That's true. But again, I want, I want to just, if I could just comment on a couple of comments that all of the speakers made. Thank you, sir. That we would join with you in any effort to look at this U.S. community contracts because we think other cities are being somewhat deceived by this notion that Amazon is in and of itself competitive. And our, our procurement rules are under $5,000, you're instructed to get the best deal you can. Between $5,000 and $50,000, you have to do a competitive process. You have to go out and get three quotes. Between $50,000 and $100,000, you have to go through a formal process and do requests for proposals, things like that. Other cities are saying, oh, good news, we don't have to be competitive, Amazon does that for us. We can go spend $50,000 and buy from Amazon because they have a dynamic pricing model that guarantees us the lowest price. That's, that's the threat of this contract. And we would be happy to testify with you in any way that we think there's a flaw in that contract.
That is definitely, we are not using the contract that way. It would be very clear.
And when I said testify, I didn't check with the city attorney, so we probably wouldn't testify. But we would, we would support you in that effort.
Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and I appreciate the comments on this. And, you know, I appreciate the people who are speaking about this because as a city, I think, as other cities too, we need to be a leader in spending local. We need to make sure that our money is going directly to as many local businesses as possible to do whatever function we, we need to do within the city. So with, with what's being said, I can understand the thresholds and, and how we're spending and what we're trying to limit. I'm just wondering, Mayor, if this would be a great topic as we, it's a one-year contract, I believe. And if we can explore, if Phoenix or some other city is doing something better to spend locally and going down to about a zero, I think that's something that we could probably tap into and try to look at with a work group.
Yes. Councilmember Keating, then, Councilmember Armando Savage.
I really like Councilmember Navarro's suggestion. One of the things that, when I spoke to Gail on the phone, that I wanted to suggest was, you know, we have a cap set and we can decide what that cap is, is going to be, whether it's 150 or even, you know, lower that to $100,000. But then have a period of time where every year we lower that cap to kind of break the habit and break the spending on Amazon. So maybe it's like 25% per year from here on out, we're lowering that cap as we move forward. That's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Councilmember Armando Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to say I really do appreciate it because I know you guys have done a lot of work and, and put all that data together. So I, I really do appreciate it. And, and I think we've even seen exactly what the Amazon spending has been for and the limits and the monies that have actually been spent. So I, I kind of agree with Councilman Navarro in the sense that this is an annual, this is a one-year contract only. But it does actually limit the way we're spending our money in Amazon. So it makes sense to move forward with the contract, but in simultaneously kind of work, like I think Gail's mentioned, to see if there's a way that we can do things better, if there's best practices out there. Because I think if we postpone this, we're going to continue to spend the way that we've been spending. And I don't think that's obviously appropriate, and there's definitely no stipulations to, to what we're doing. So I don't think that that's a, a bad thing to go ahead and approve this contract for now, put in those regulations. But at the same time, work to see if we can find a better solution, like Councilmember Keating and Councilmember Navarro mentioned. I, I, you know, being part of a small business in the city of Tempe, I mean, of course, we, we want everybody to come and do business with us, but I know sometimes that's not always realistic. But, you know, we want to be, be fair and do everything that we can to make sure, exactly what you're saying is that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that we're spending our here, our, our money here locally with these businesses.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I'm curious about how Phoenix did it, because obviously they're right next door. And so maybe we could reach out to them and, and get some suggestions from Phoenix. And also, I'm a huge supporter of the local business, so I'd like us to spend as much money as possible in our local businesses. And I'm just curious about what you guys are doing as far as training the staff so they, they grasp this concept because it's so important.
Councilor Granville? Yes, I'm sorry. Mayor, council members. Yes, we, we have incorporated that issue into our procurement training. And so we do reach out to our end-users and make sure they are aware of our local spend interests. And especially on the P-card side, we have a P-card training class where everybody that is issued a P-card receives training on that. And we do coach them on the importance. And they, and I think our employees are very, definitely get that idea, and they want to be actively recruiting our local businesses. But we do certainly mention that and market that when we talk to our users.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Councilor Granville?
So there's a couple of things about this that confuse me. So right now, we're already spending money on Amazon with no contract in place. If we didn't pass this contract, we would still keep spending money on Amazon, we just wouldn't have these tools. We can't give you direction right now to stop spending money with Amazon because the lawyers would freak out because it's not in our agenda. So our only option is, my understanding is, is to limit the way you spend money on Amazon or to not pass this and not limit the way you spend money on Amazon. Am I good so far?
Councilmember, we can spend, the rules I said before, we can spend up to $5,000 with no competition whatsoever, which is the large majority, if not all, of the spending that happens on Amazon.
Right. What I'm saying is, and if we pass this, then we could start to gray out the things that have competitive.
We, we can. However, we also know that there's an artificial limit placed, which is if cumulatively those small purchases come up to $100,000, we have to get city council approval to spend the next dollar.
You mean $150,000 under this one?
The $150,000.
Or $100,000?
The $150,000.
Oh, because it's one vendor?
So, so we didn't get, we didn't explain this because it's a lot of detail, but let me try. We typically come to you and say, we've done a competitive process and we've gotten proposals from folks, and we told them exactly how much we're going to spend. We're going to buy this for $150,000, or we're going to buy this, how much will you charge us? The winning bidder's $150,000, we come to you and say, we'd like a contract to spend $150,000. This is different. We're asking you for a contractual relationship with them, but while we're at it, we're estimating for you what we expect to spend during that contractual period, and you're limiting it. So the $150,000 is a limit. What happens after that is, we've spent our $150,000 and somebody in the city needs to make a purchase. And it's something that is a special order item that's only available online. It can't be purchased in Tempe. It can't be purchased in Arizona. You're going to have to buy it from somebody out of state. If we've reached that limit, then what you're saying is, if it's available for $100 on Amazon and the next best deal you can get is a special order out of Nebraska for $150, you're going to have to spend the higher amount. So that's, it's, you're right. This is a little different than any other contract, contract we've come to you with and said, place a limit on us. It's based on what we think we can get our spending down to. And it's based on limiting those expenditures to things that we shouldn't be able to buy locally.
So that, and so that's, so that helps me out. That adds a lot of clarity to my confusion. So I think, you know, we've heard from the Local First guy when we've talked about this. But if everything that is in any procurement agreement that we have is grayed out, then by definition, any of the $150,000 we're spending on Amazon right now is money that definitionally we don't have a procurement contract to buy locally. Correct. So, so it's not like we're saying like, don't buy local, buy from Amazon. Every one of those will be grayed out. So it's either buy from Amazon or buy from Wisconsin. Okay, if that's not the case, explain to me why it's not the case.
I didn't understand exactly.
So, so what you're saying is, the only things on Amazon that are not grayed out as unpurchasable are things for which we have no procurement contract in place.
That is correct.
Office supplies, whatever, whatever, whatever. So I go to buy a, a toy, it'll be grayed out if we have any procurement contract that allows me to buy toys. Which means the only things left on Amazon are the things that we do not have procurement contracts for.
Correct. And, and the step we want to take further is, if you want to buy a cowboy hat on Amazon, you can probably find that locally. So we want to take the next step and say, and for those things that we don't have a contract for, we're still going to try to push you to get some local vendors to see if they can offer the same thing. So, so we're taking that additional step, but your analysis.
How'd that work?
Well, for items, for items over $5,000 where you're required to get three competitive bids, we would say, we can't tell you who to get from, but if there is a local vendor, make those one of those. So Amazon could be one, and Kmart could be, well, Kmart's not a business. Target could be one, and, and the local vendor could be one. So we're going to encourage people to include one of those in the three. For items under $5,000, we can just train people and say, we are telling you that as a city, it is beneficial to our local community and to our economy to buy those locally. So we're, we're encouraging you to make an effort to do that. What we can't do, and I'll have Judy can comment on this, what we can't do is say, don't buy from Amazon. You can't specify a vendor who has the lowest price and say, we prohibit you from buying from them. That, that's a violation.
I have one last question, and then I'm done.
Wait, let him finish. It's a violation of what?
State law.
Judy can comment, but I believe state procurement law does not allow you to, to eliminate a vendor from contention if they are competitively priced.
Yeah, and I know we've had that discussion times before.
I think Judy sent a memo out this week.
The, the, the last question I have, and then I'll, then I'll shush up, is one of the advantages to buying locally is because it, it's, it's tax money that stays in the system. It's workers that stay in the system. It's all these things that stay in the system. And so when you look at a $10 cowboy hat you buy in Tempe and a $10 cowboy hat you buy from Nebraska, if you really showed the actual values you were creating, that Nebraska hat would have to be an $8.50 hat because they're not helping pay for firefighters and police and roads and all these things. Is there any way we can bake that in to the way that people look at the Amazon purchases when they're comparing it to a local vendor?
So, Councilmember, thank you for the question. What, what we can do is, those things that we don't currently contractually bid because we don't think we're spending that much money on them, Reenie gave the example of toys. So if we think that there are enough toys, or we think that there are enough special order books that can't be purchased from our current book vendor that we're buying books from, then we just do out and do, we go out and do a competitive bid for that. And we say, we would like to do a competitive bid. The only advantage we can give the local supplier is that we take local sales tax out of the equation. If we're paying 1.8% local.
And my question is, is can that one be included in when they're comparing the apples samples on the Amazon?
In a competitive bidding process, we do that. We could encourage staff to say, if you're paying just 1.8% more,
That's the part I'm getting at, yeah.
Then you would be paying the same amount. Now, the other things you mentioned are legitimate, but they're not within our ability in a procurement code to consider.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have another? Vice Mayor?
Yes, so I'm really struck by what Gail said because I know Tempe, we, we do the stakeholder process right, and we really engage the public. And this has been an issue that's kind of been brought before us in, you know, in the past few weeks. And this is our first opportunity to talk about it as a council, and it's a pretty important issue. If you look at, if you step back and take a larger view of this issue and you look at the Amazon contracts within the context of what's happening across the country and cities and best practices, we really haven't looked at other best practices. And the question was asked about, is there any other procurement tool out there that allows you to block and chart the spending? And we don't really know the answer to that. We don't know what other cities do. And I know that Phoenix doesn't use P-cards, but they may have a system that is stopping them from, you know, going to those. They, they may have a system that we're not sure about. It just seems to me that if we are defining and perfecting and realizing the imperfections that communities grant, that we should engage our local businesses, our changing hands, our Local First Arizona businesses, the Chamber, just to have a discussion, maybe just one meeting where we can have, it can be an outreach meeting, it could be educational. We could come back in one month, and I think people would feel a lot more comfortable about this decision because it does in some sense feel rushed. Some of the questions I was asking you, it was, you know, an hour and a half ago. And I just, I'm typically not the one that wants to delay something, but I feel in this instance that we need to reach out to our stakeholders and talk to them about it and understand. Otherwise, we might be setting up a situation where people, the headline reads, Jared, sorry. The headline reads, "City approves Amazon contract, city's working with Amazon," and it's not really explained exactly.
That's not, that's not what we're doing.
That's exactly my point, Mr. Mayor. That's exactly my point. It's not. So we need to look at, I think, just having a task force, just having one meeting even to discuss this. And I, you know, I don't feel comfortable moving forward without that. If we do move forward, I think we need, we've already spent $100,000 in this, in this fiscal, no, in the last six months. And we're recommending 150. That 150 doesn't seem like that much of a difference considering a lot of the blocks are going to immediately take off maybe, you know, 50 or more from the 200 that we've been spending for the past couple of years. So that number 150 just seems very large to me. I like Randy's idea of doing a diet on it, but I think starting at 150 is just too much.
The idea that was mentioned is exactly what would happen if we put the limits on it. That we would look at it and have a look at staff to answer that. That's the whole point of what we are looking at. We'd look to, we would measure the spending. There's a limit, but then we would measure the spending, and then we'd take, oh, we're spending here, so maybe we should do an RFP.
I understand, but the way Amazon captures the market is they develop tools that are incredibly useful for cities. This blocking tool, this tool to chart the spending, it's incredibly useful. But we don't know, Mr. Mayor, if I could just finish.
You can't, I'm agreeing with you. I'm not, I'm agreeing with you. Okay, I'm agreeing 100%. Because it's putting in the blocking tools so we can look at certain ways so we can spend less.
No, I understand that, and that's what, that's what's so very clever about Amazon. They have this tool and this software. But we don't know if there are other cities out there that have best practices that are doing it without that particular Amazon tool. They could be doing it with a, with a tool that doesn't necessarily send you to Amazon. And there's, you know, we know from studies that Amazon is up to 10% to 12% higher in pricing, a lot because of the variable pricing. And that they're going to be, you know, you have to make online purchases. No one's arguing that, that there's certain police training manual books, there's things that you have to buy online. Amazon isn't necessarily the best, you know, the best purveyor or vendor for that. And it seems like we haven't investigated this enough to look and see what other cities are doing their best practices.
Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for our staff, if this was polled and we came back three months from now, what's?
One month from now?
Whatever, whatever. What's the impact to the city? What's the impact to the city of not passing it tonight?
Thank you, council member. The, the impact would be, we will stay where we are now, which is, there are no rules. So, anything up to $5,000, our staff will try their best to get the best price on that. And if they think it's Amazon, they will use Amazon competitively with other vendors and they will continue by. So, not passing this tonight doesn't stop us from spending on Amazon, it just continues the current practice. There's really not a great effect to postponing this. If, if you want to delay this decision, that's fine. I just don't want you to be misled to think that delaying this tonight means we won't spend money on Amazon. Our procurement code says, go buy the best priced product you can get for the job you need done.
Let's do this. Let's create a task force with staff to come back and engage local businesses in our community and anyone else that's interested in procurement to talk about this exact item and we can come back in either our next council meeting or the, the meeting after that, which is less than a month. If we look at our agenda, what can we do?
So just to be clear, Mayor, I, you know, we, we said a lot of things tonight and I, and the feedback I'm getting means that we have misled you a little bit and I don't want to do that. We can enter into a relationship without signing this U.S. Communities contract, Amazon would probably accommodate us and say, if you really want to put a block on something, put a block on something. It's not just that. It's the free Amazon Prime and free delivery, there are, there are other incentives. There's probably a way to negotiate with Amazon to get the things, the blocking and things like that. We could probably negotiate with them to get that free anyway. So, that's not the main driver. We like that, we like that it's in this contract, we hate other things about the U.S. Communities contract. So it isn't just the U.S. Communities contract. This is just a bigger effort by the staff to try to control our small spending. That's all.
Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, thank you. And I, and I totally get it. I think, I, I, I know what, you're trying to get into the right direction, I get that. But I'm thinking out of the comfort level, and if it's not going to be a issue to delay it a month or two, to get some buy-in, to get some other feedback, or to get some deeper explanation on it, or to maybe even find to even better, if, if we, if we wait, I'm, I don't know if there's an impact.
I'm going to let Michael address that because I.
No, there, Mayor, Michelle, council members, I don't see any impact on that. We will continue to, you know, approach it where we're analyzing that spin and we're already doing that to try to look for areas to move away from Amazon, which makes sense. And so we're starting that process, but I don't see a delay that would impact us here.
Okay, so then, the suggestion would be to have staff engage our vendors, the public, and so that you can come back with some, look at some solutions and some ideas that, if there's any other best practices that we can look at before you come back to the next meeting and we can move forward with, see if it makes sense to move forward. Thank you. Is that good?
Excuse me, Mayor, members of council. Is there a motion to postpone this item with that?
I look for a motion for what I just said, but I, I can't make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I guess I can make the motion. Councilmember Adams?
I make the motion to wait, to make the decision.
So you're making a motion to have our procurement engage our local vendors and other vendors on the practices that we have moving forward with procurement?
Yes.
And for clarification, you are postponing it to the September or October meeting, which would you prefer?
Probably.
September 27th or October 22nd?
Would appreciate a little extra time.
Okay, I'll still.
Second?
Perfect, all right.
There a second?
There's a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. Okay. That motion passes seven to zero. Next is, the next item on our agenda is our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard and will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Miscellaneous items, bids, contracts and resolutions. Item 6A1 is to approve a two-year contract renewal for metering services incorporated for commercial and residential water meter change-out and repair services, water meter box lid removal and installation, and advanced water metering infrastructure systems, endpoint installation and programming. This is, is there a, any comments or discussion from the council on item 6A1? Councilmember Adams?
I have a comment because we've got, I've heard a lot of complaints about the lids that are used, and I know staff was working on correcting that, so I just want to make sure that we're not using the same lids in this contract. I know you just sat down, sorry, Reenie.
General Services Director, and I do have customer service underneath, which includes the people who are responsible for the lids. Yes, this contract tonight is not actually for the lids. This is the vendor who would replace the lids, but not actually manufactures the lids. We are working with the vendor who supplies the lids to look for heavier lids that we can use in areas that are flood prone. So, so this is a different, this, this, these people actually do the physical labor. They don't, they don't supply the lids.
Are we using the same lids then? I mean.
We are in the process of getting heavier lids that we would put in areas that are flood prone. So, luckily, we've had a few other rain events since the one that we had the three inches in one hour. Then we haven't had additional flooding or, or floating, I should say, of the lids. So, I think one of the other issues is that it was a really serious flood event and a lot of things floated in addition to the plastic lids on the meter boxes. So, but, we have a certain area of the city that we know where we had a large number of floating lids, and so we are looking at replacing those areas with heavier lids. So, I don't think they're in yet. We're, we've ordered them.
So that, would that also be the flood irrigation? Then that would be an area that you're looking at, the flood irrigation?
I'm not aware that there was a problem with floating lids in the flood irrigation areas.
Yes.
The, the problem I was aware of was with that rain event, so I'll have to look into that.
Okay, yes, I'd gotten several reports, actually more than several, about the flood irrigation also, and it's, it's raising them up and they're floating, floating in the streets.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for that information, I wasn't aware.
Okay. You're welcome.
Yeah.
I just want to say, my, my, my lid was one that floated away. And, and a lot of my neighbors did too. And actually, this wasn't this last rain, it was another one, it was kind of crazy. But I will say, city staff was there bright and early in the morning, actually out putting up, putting those lids back on, but I beat you guys to mine, so. But good job, good job.
Thank you.
Good job by city staff because they were right on it.
We spent about, our meter readers spent about three days just replacing lids. And, so you all know, the plastic lids are required so that the meter, the, the unit that does the radio waves that we read remotely works. That's why we had to go to plastic lids. So, we're working through the problem.
Thanks for their help. This is the service, the people are putting the lids.
Is there any other comments on item 6A1? If not, is there a motion for item 6A1? It's been moved by Vice Mayor QB, seconded by Councilmember Aradona Savage. Please vote. My motion passes.
Seven to zero with Councilmember Navarro.
Yes.
Seven to zero. Next item is item 6A2, to award a five-year contract with one, five, two-year renewal options for payments corporation for the acquisition, installation, data transfer and ongoing proposed, process, or, last one. Ongoing proposal solution maintenance and support for a vendor hosted SAS mobile web payment, which is known as SAS, processing service for the city. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6A2 or a motion? Moved by Council, or Vice Mayor QB, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion carries seven to zero. Item 6A3 is to approve the transfer budget appropriation from the Transit Capital Improvements Program to the Human Services Department's general fund budget. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6A3 or a motion on item 6A3? Moved by Councilmember Granville, seconded by Councilmember Aradona Savage. Please vote. Passes seven to zero. Next is item 6A4, is to approve the reimbursement of not more than $3 million to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the purchase of parcels at Danielle Plaza. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6A4 or a motion on item 6A4? It's been moved by Councilmember Aradona Savage, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero. The next section of our non-consent agenda is our ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearings of these votes, items are scheduled for September 27, 2018. Orders and items for introduction and first hearing. Item 6B1 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, relating to the Tempe Citizens Panel and Review for Police Complaints and the Use of Force by moving it within the city code to be consistent with other similarly situated ordinances and amending sections 2-711, established composition. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for September 27, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this, on this item? Could you please get my attention? See none? Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6B1? Councilmember Granville?
Yeah, Mayor, I, at our last meeting when this was up, initially, this was going to be passed off to the city manager. There was an amendment to this, in this version, that now passes it off to you so that you can appoint citizens. I appreciate that that was done and I think this is the far better way to do it and I, I think it, it matches better with our policies and it's just, it's, it's a cleaner way to do it.
All right. Next is item 6B2, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for zoning map amendment and approve a development plan review for two new single-story commercial buildings totaling 4,630 square feet from the northeast corner of Baseline Road and Roosevelt Street Retail located at 660 West Baseline Road. The applicant is Vertical Design Studios. The second final public hearing is scheduled for September 27. This is a public hearing item, but first, would the applicant like to make a statement? Ms. Sander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Darren Sander, Sander Associates. I'm here representing Avalon Investments. We, they are the developer of this project. I'd like to go through a very, very brief presentation and then talk about a few issues at the end. I do have with me representatives from Avalon, as well as Chuck Wright, our traffic engineer. So, the location of this project, I'm sure you're all very familiar with. This is the northeast corner of Roosevelt and Baseline Road, just west of Kyrene, directly adjacent to the cobblestone car wash. So it was an old trailer park and it's been vacant for many years now. Currently zoned trailer park and you can see on the screen, well, I guess I don't need to point, but you can see on the screen on the left side is a map that shows in blue the cobblestone, and then in red is the portion that's being rezoned. In the middle is just a general map of the zoning, I'm sorry, the general plan. General plan for the property is commercial, so the future use for this property is proposed as commercial, and that is the same as the cobblestone next door. Property around it is generally residential, and then there's quite a bit of industrial in the blue and commercial in the red, and obviously Quanis Park to the east in the green. You can see on the map to the, to the right, trailer park zoning exists on the site, very, very old zoning. I don't even know if that's in the zoning ordinance anymore. We've got some mobile home park to the north, some residential R16 to the north, as well as the apartments R3 to the west and to the south. And then there's quite a bit of CSS zoning, which is what we're requesting in the general area. It's a broader picture there of, of kind of where the property is. It's west of Kyrene on Baseline, east of Hardy, in that sort of general area, south of the canal. Little bit broader aerial map there for you if you're not very familiar with the site. Railroad runs to the east as well, so there's a natural barrier there with the canal and the railroad. We've got support letters from both the apartment projects to the west and to the south, as well as cobblestone obviously is in support of the project. Little bit different circumstance here, we're actually not just zoning our property. The property, that little remnant parcel to the northeast, staff had asked us when we came in for our pre-op, staff had said, hey, by the way, did you know the cobblestone owns this property to your northeast? It's a little remnant piece. They own that, it's theirs, they're using it for their parking, I believe it's employee parking. And by the way, it's also zoned trailer park. For some reason, it's an old remnant zoning. Would you guys be willing to just go ahead and wrap that into your zoning application? Zone that to CSS, which is what the rest of cobblestone is. Make it all consistent. So that's why we're rezoning that little strip. We are not using that for our project. Cobblestone's going to maintain ownership, they are maintaining use of that, that has nothing to do with our project. We're just doing it as an accommodation to staff and to, obviously, cobblestone. Very similar situation to the plat that was heard tonight. The area hadn't been actually platted as a subdivision, it just was split up in parcels over the years. So staff also asked us to go ahead and clean up the plat for this area. So this, the map to the, to the bottom left, I almost said southwest, the map to the bottom left is, is the map that shows kind of what we were doing for that accommodation as well. So we replatted it and, and thank you for approving that tonight. So we replatted that to accommodate us and cobblestones. I'm sorry, the top right one. Us and the cobblestone. And then the design review package also, the zoning, the design review, just on our property. The remnant parcel is just, just an accommodation. So the rezoning again, just rezoning from trailer park to CSS, which is one of the lower commercial districts. Again, the general plan shows it as commercial, and there's a couple of criteria for when you rezon property. One is that the rezoning shall be consistent with and conform to the general plan for the property. In this case, the general plan's commercial, we're rezoning it to commercial. It brings the property into conformance with the general plan designation on the land, and the zoning generally implements the general plan. So that's what we're doing, we meet that first criteria. The second criteria is generally something like the zoning must be compatible with, with the surrounding zoning pattern. Surrounding zoning pattern direct adjacent to CSS to the south and southeast and southwest, there's PCC1 and other CSS as well. So we feel we meet both of those criteria for the rezoning. And the DPR, I'll go by this very quickly. DPR has 12 criteria minimum just for DPR requirements. We went through all of this with the DRC. We were approved at the DRC, so they felt we met all of these requirements, mainly design elements, building elevations, materials, the site plan layout, the landscape elements, the landscape layout, how the, how the site works, how the traffic patterns work, everything about it. That was all covered in the, in the DPR and again, recommended for approval by the DRC. Materials wise, pretty upscale materials. For, for these tiny buildings, they're 2,200 square feet approximately, the materials are very rich. There's brick veneer, there's wood, there's stone, there's, you know, there's some really cool metal patterns, there's stucco, which is typical. But there's some really cool colors, and I think you can see from the elevations, there's a color palette here, and there's some really neat different changes of materials and colors for such tiny buildings. I actually asked my client, are you sure you're good with these, these materials? Because once you get it approved, hopefully, you got to build this. And they said absolutely. They worked with Diana Kaminsky on this for several months, getting this all together. Staff actually recommended quite a few of these materials, and staff actually recommended that the outdoor patios be added to give a little bit more of that kind of Arizona feel, indoor/outdoor. Patrons can sit outside a little bit. Patrons can sit outside a little bit, and pushing the building southward as much as possible towards the street, so there's a great visibility of the patios as well as the buildings. See here, another view from the west looking northeast. Again, so the use permits were approved at the DRC, use permits for the drive-throughs. You can kind of see them on here, they face on the west, the windows are on the west side. So, that was a part of our package that we applied for here, it was part of our application, and that was approved two weeks ago or so at the DRC. So, that part has been done, that's approved, and we're moving forward tonight with just the rezoning and the development plan review, and again, the plat was approved tonight as well. Thank you. Landscape plan, again, part of our development plan review, very lush landscape plan. Again, the applicant worked, developer worked with staff quite a bit, with Diana, to make sure that this was as lush as possible. The zoning on this property is actually one of, again, the lower intensity commercial districts in the zoning ordinance, and we're also doing a much lower intensity development. Two small pads as opposed to one large pad, or even two larger pads. We're developing probably around 20% less than could be allowed on this property. Not only the building lot coverage, but the building height is very low, it's around 24 feet. There's just two small 2,200-square-foot buildings, and that leaves a lot of room for landscaping. So, there's about 66 trees on this site plan. There's a lot of trees, a lot of shade, a lot of cool things happening. We've got a lot of pedestrian shade as well, we've got coverage for the patios, coverage for the pedestrian walkways. We've got walkway access, you can see to the south there, access to the sidewalk, to the site. So, it's a very lush site plan, and the green isn't the only green, there's actually a lot of shrubbery in there, too. I just didn't color all of it because it would look kind of too green, I think. I think, you know, I wanted to give a good representation of it. There's some of the materials and the coverages and the trees and things, if you're interested. The general site plan layout, we made some modifications just before the DRC hearing. We had some comments and concerns from the neighborhood meeting about the access on the Roosevelt Street. Our initial site plan showed the driveway lining up with the driveway to the west. There's an apartment project to the west, the Mark Taylor Project. You can kind of see it right there, there's a little driveway on the west side of Roosevelt, just west of our exitway. That is an exit-only driveway for the apartments, and it's, I believe, an emergency access driveway, so it's kind of a gated driveway for them, and it's not their primary exit, their primary access point is on baseline. So, initially, we just said, well, just like every other project, line them up, you know, line up the two driveways, that's what everyone wants. We did that initially, we ended up changing that and pushing it down, facing it south, pushing the traffic south, so that traffic didn't turn north into the neighborhood, which was a concern we heard. Then we worked a little bit more with staff, with Julian, and he said, you know, there's another way we can help out, too, make sure traffic doesn't turn into the neighborhood and drive through the neighborhood. Let's make that little median that we've added there in Roosevelt Street to the north, let's make that longer, let's make it bigger. So, we're going to be adding a median, and it's going to be bigger than that, we just haven't had time to figure out the length yet, but we just figured that out, I believe, today with the traffic department with Julian. We're going to make it much longer, so you actually can't turn right out of the site. There's not going to be a way to turn right out of that property into the neighborhood. So, we realigned that driveway, you can see it now faces south, realigned that whole corner, so it faces south. The general flow of the property is access off of baseline. You can go into the site off of baseline, so you're driving down baseline, you see the restaurant. The western restaurant is going to be a Starbucks. The eastern restaurant, we don't know yet. We've got a potential healthy restaurant that we're talking to, but we don't actually have a final tenant yet. But, you know, the driveway there is off of baseline, can pick up traffic either eastbound or westbound. And then the driveway on Roosevelt Street, probably more exit traffic, we're putting a left-turn-only sign there, no exit into the residential neighborhood. So, I think the traffic pattern on this site works very, very well for how small it is. You can see where the drive-through pattern goes around the buildings, it wraps around the north, then it goes to the west, and then it wraps around to the south. So, it's a drive-through configuration that meets the city code requirements, as well as the driveways and all of the access points. If there's anything else, refuse, obviously.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Are those buildings the exact same size?
I think, I think the one on the east is a tiny bit smaller. I think there's like a 200-square-foot.
I mean, it's the exact same footprint, it looks like.
Yeah, they're very, very close. I think one's a little bit smaller.
Yeah, two coffee shops, one Dutch, one Starbucks? You're talking about traffic, holy cow.
Dutch Bros there and Starbucks? You never know, I mean, they probably wouldn't mind. And as you know, Starbucks is very, very, very careful about its locations, and it's pretty excited about locating on this site. They feel it's appropriate, and they're going to be able to capture the traffic off the street. So, we did have a little discussion about traffic, and Vice Mayor Cubey had some questions for Shelley. We've been talking with Julian, we've been talking with Shelley, our traffic engineer is here, he can make a statement as well regarding the traffic. But I think Shelley said it best, and Julian actually said it before, that, you know, typically, drive-through traffic pulls traffic off the street. It's not a destination location, it's a, hey, I'm driving home, oh, I want that, I need that restaurant, I need to go there, I need to get something, or I'm driving to work, and oh, I want that. It typically is a pull off the street, it takes traffic off of the main street, captures it there for a small amount of time, whether they go inside and sit, or whether they go through the drive-through. It captures traffic off the street and doesn't increase it to the extent that you would think. In addition, the baseline volumes have gone down quite a bit in the last two years. The volume went down about 7,600 trips, according to the city's records, the city's numbers that they do every few years. So, the traffic on baseline, believe it or not, has actually gone down about almost 8,000 trips, which is, I don't know, about 20% or so, maybe 15% in the last two years. Again, this is a very small infill site that, you know, really conforms to the general plan. There can be a lot of things developed on this property. The general plan is asking for commercial, there's a lot of commercial uses on this property that could be much bigger and much more intense. And at the DRC, Diana Kaminsky mentioned that as part of her staff presentation. She said, you know, this could be built a lot bigger, there could be a lot more stuff built here, according to the general plan, we want to see commercial here, and this could be a lot more stuff on the site, there could be a lot more traffic generated, it could be a dental office, it could be, you know, a little small shopping center, it could be a lot of things that draw much more destination-type traffic. And this is not what our project is, we're actually developing under the maximum site lot coverage, we're developing over our landscape coverage, which reflects that we're actually developing less of the property than we could.
Vice Mayor Cubey has a question.
Yes.
You did conduct a traffic, a small traffic study?
We did a traffic impact study that designated the number of trips that would be generated by the site, and Chuck can speak to that, I'll have him come up in a second. Yes. And then, and that's a good segue, the traffic light, we understand that the neighborhood would like a traffic light at the site, you know, obviously, that's a city requirement, it's a city decision, whether it meets the federal warrants or not under the UTCD, and we're hearing that it does not meet the warrants at this time, and certainly, our small impact of traffic doesn't increase the traffic enough to really require a traffic light at this location. And then Shelley mentioned, too, that there have been no serious or fatal accidents on this property in the last three years, and only four minor accidents at this, which is, which is great, and I'm sure that's something that Starbucks has probably looked at and made darn sure of over that time. One other question that we were asked was about jaywalking. You know, someone mentioned, you know, aren't people going to just run across baseline from those apartments to the south to go to Starbucks or go to the restaurant? And, you know, it's an interesting concept, but do people from the north jaywalk across the street south all the time to go to KFC or to go to Taco Bell? You know, it's a big street, I don't think we're creating an attractive nuisance enough that says, hey, come here, you have to be here, run across the street. So, while I appreciate the concern, I don't really think that's going to be an issue at this, at this location. So, with that, I'd love to call up Chuck Wright and have him speak a little bit about the traffic and his review of things and kind of his analysis and take on it.
I already have a card for Chuck, too.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Chuck Wright, 7740 North 16th Street. We did do a traffic impact statement for the project as part of the supplemental to the city, which is fairly typical for a site of this size. The largest takeaway, I think, compared to the typical site or the typical land, is really this is a convenience use, so that we really envision that the significant part of the traffic that's generated are those folks that are already on Baseline Road, turning in from westbound Baseline Road, utilizing the convenience uses and then continuing on westbound. There certainly are traffic conditions in the area where at times left turns are a challenge, and I think that's sort of lends these types of uses, because you'll often see the opportunity to pick a convenience use that is on the side of the road that you're traveling. In fact, I think a lot of the marketing for these sites relies on that. So, that was one of the main takeaways that we looked at. There was a lot of discussion about traffic during some of the other meetings that we held. We did try to explain some of the options and whether they were really appropriate for this location, the traffic signalization, certainly, those are some criteria that are not set solely by the city, and the requires significant cross-street volumes where the north leg of this intersection really serves a relatively small number of houses, and even with the addition of the site traffic, it's not expected that the traffic signal warrants would be met. We looked at options to consider multiple access points on the baseline rather than utilizing Roosevelt and spacing for the driveway away from the intersection, or just such that those things weren't viable alternatives. And I think that's the reason why we've migrated towards the configuration of the driveway on the north side of the site that really is attempting to maximum ability, focus that traffic back to baseline road, although, the street system in the surrounding neighborhood doesn't really lend itself conveniently to cutting through in that direction. I think the site plan's evolved to try and even further minimize those opportunities. And if there's any specific questions I could answer, I'd be happy to try to do that.
Councilman Navarro?
I don't know, I'm not really sure if there'll be related traffic, but one of the questions I have is, you have one committed Starbucks, am I correct on that? And then the other ones, nothing's really committed yet?
Correct. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Navarro, yes, we don't have a final signed commitment for the second restaurant yet.
So, with the second, are you, are you, is that, let's put it this way, could you get someone in there that doesn't need the drive-through?
Possibly, but right now, the marketing is towards the drive-through. The market in that area is more towards drive-through restaurants, quick convenience, pickup restaurants, and especially with a pad that's small.
With the two things, it's kind of unique, it seems like, is you're not going to get a Jack in the Box, so to speak, because you have a building, or would they, would that be something that could possibly go through there?
I think if the size met the requirements, I think we could. I think it's a drive-through-oriented type of size of the location.
Right, but correctly, but the designs of the buildings, you already got it slated, this is what the building's going to look like, these are the materials, so when I say like a Wendy's, a Jack in the Box, they want their buildings, so to speak, so you might get something unique, is probably what I'm trying to say.
That's what they're shooting for, is something a little more unique. If they did want to come in and do something different, they'd have to come in and change the building elevations.
And just to say, I do appreciate the design, I do appreciate the landscape. One of the things I really had heartburn on was when we went through development on Lakeshore and Royal Road with the Starbucks over there, very plain Jane, very basic stucco, and just crap landscape. I'm still pissed off about that. And the thing is, though, it's priority to making sure the landscape, you know, fits the character, fits the area, but is maintained, it looks great, and the building design, I'm glad that they put the intensity in the building design and the thoughtfulness, because that adds character to the area and adds value to the area, in my opinion. So, I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Oh, Councilmember Granville, I'm sorry. Do you happen to have a more zoomed-in photo of that street, the baseline, just south of the location, or is that the best one you happen to have there handy?
Lights.
It looks like Google Maps.
You're looking south?
I've got it on Google Maps, but she can't see my Google Maps.
Yeah, I don't.
No worries, I can explain it. My concern, I agree with you as far as that it's not a destination, yeah, oh, yeah, if you could just put that up there, maybe that would be the easiest way to do it. We've got a projector thing. My concern isn't the westbound traffic causing traffic issues, because I think you're right, right? You're heading west on baseline, and you pull in, you get your coffee, and you continue, goes up, and it continues going west on baseline. That makes sense to me, but, but the part that I think gives me a little more heartburn, and I'd be curious to hear you address it, oh, we're getting closer. There we go. Yeah. This was more work than I thought it would be, I shouldn't have said anything. My concern is not actually the westbound traffic, but the eastbound traffic. So, I'm heading eastbound, and I decide I want a coffee, or I decide I want whatever the other building is, I'm going to pull into the middle lane, and at 4:00 in the afternoon, when traffic is way backed up, I'm going to try and cut across three lanes of traffic on baseline to pull into the coffee shop. That's, that's my concern from a traffic standpoint, and if I can't do it, well, I sure do want my coffee, I'm just going to make everyone wait as I inch my way across three lanes of traffic to do that. Was that part of your traffic study? Are there ways that that concern might be mitigable?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Granville, we certainly looked at all aspects of the impacts of traffic, and accessing into and out of the site, obviously, the tenants that we're talking to, as well as Starbucks, looked at the access for that. Obviously, they want people to be able to access their property. One of the things that we looked at was the timing of the lights between Kyrene and Hardy. There's a pretty significant gap in those timing of lights, so there's a free flow of open traffic in each lane at a certain point in time. So, if you are turning, you're going eastbound, and you want to turn into the site, you would pull into that center lane, there'd be eventually, within a minute or two, a gap in traffic from the light at Kyrene, and then you can turn and cross the traffic lanes, and that's a very similar situation, turning eastbound off of Roosevelt. You know, it's not 100%, there are absolutely on every arterial street in Tempe, there are times when you cannot turn left within a couple of minutes, absolutely. There's no 100% guarantee that you're going to be able to make two turning movements at any given time on any arterial street, but there are gaps, and there are opportunities to turn, it just may not be 100% convenient for you on an arterial street.
Councilman Navarro?
Mayor, thank you, I think you hit a point, because you raised a great point, because there is a pause, that there is a pause, there's no other traffic coming in, because it is, everyone's paused at that intersection to make that turn.
T, it's a T.
Yeah. Yeah, Kyrene, a great point. The other thing is baseline, being baseline road is horrific anyways. I don't care if you're going to talk about, which I've done frequently, crossing the way, I'm going to cut across three lanes to get my Taco Bell. So, it's, it's a challenge, and it was always challenges wherever you go, and we talk about jaywalkers and stuff, and that frustrates me, too, because as a firefighter, there's a sidewalk or a crosswalk about 600 feet away, but yet, those still cross wherever they want, I can't control that. You know, that's just, I'll save it for later. Anyways, to your point, I think, I think you raised a great point about the pause there.
Thank you.
I do have a whole bunch of cards, so I'm going to go through those first. Tony Cristinelli, please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Tony Cristinelli, 5038 South Roosevelt Street, Tempe. I'm a board member of the Casa Fiesta HOA, and I would like to speak to you a little bit about our take on the traffic at baseline. Try and get this centered a little bit. So, you've heard about the traffic studies, I've heard some interesting numbers. I guess I want to refute one of those numbers right away. This is ADOT data, they take this data, they run it all the time, it's nonstop, it's the access from baseline onto I-10, which is less than two miles away. The average daily is 213,000 vehicles per day, that's the average, that's 27, that's 1917 data, that's the latest available on their website. That may not sound like much, the 22nd busiest intersection in the state, but 10%, a 10% increase would have put it to number three, so there's approximately 25 intersections that are within 10% of each other. The baseline I-10 intersection, actually, in the last 10 years, has varied between number eight and number 27. So, I think it's, at least on ADOT data, I can't support that the traffic has gone down 40% or 20%, whatever I heard, and certainly, 8,000 decrease might be possible, but 8,000 to 210,000 is a much big difference. So, there is a lot of traffic, is the point.
Excuse me, Mr. Cristinelli.
Yes?
Vice Mayor Cubey has a question for you.
So, the intersection you're talking about, though, is I-10 and baseline, that intersection, correct?
Yeah, it's, that's where the ADOT data is from.
Right, right.
Right, which is less than two miles.
That is where, a lot of traffic is going different directions there.
They can only go east-west, I mean, that's the traffic from baseline to I-10.
Right.
And there's really no other sources of traffic, other than, there's some sources coming on Priest, so maybe there's some increase of that direction, but, I mean, most of the traffic is either coming from farther east or farther west as it gets to that intersection. So, in other words, if you're sitting at the Home Depot, the traffic there looks the same as it does at Hardy. There's really no difference. Yes, Councilmember?
Vice Mayor Navarro?
Yeah, just to, I know, and this is where the, to Councilmember Cubey's point, and I drive it coming back home often, the cut-through through Guadalupe, the cut-through through Hardy, Priest dumping onto that adds to that, especially in the early mornings, it's hard to say that it's going to, and Kyrene could, too, but you also have a dedicated light there, a stop lane, and traffic will come in through there.
So, I would point out that you do have Arizona Mills Mall, right?
So, I would point out that you do have Arizona Mills Mall right there.
Excuse me?
You have Arizona Mills Mall.
I have, big destination.
I mean, that's a, that's a major, and, and people actually sat off.
But that's actually, that's actually gonna be siphoning a lot of traffic out of the I-10 intersection.
Or, or, because they come off the 60, off the Priest.
No, 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 this is, this is only entrance data to the 10.
Okay.
From the baseline.
I, I, I get it, but like, they could be coming from the east to Arizona Mills.
Oh, yes.
It's a large shopping center, from Arizona Mills, they could get onto baseline to get on I-10, either go north or south.
Yes, correct.
Yes, Vice, uh, Councilman Ernando Savage?
Um, you know, sorry, I, I think I gotta kinda remind everybody, um, and I know exactly what you're talking about, because to me, this is the, the traffic that's on baseline to get to I-10 is what you're referring to. And I think we need to go back and remember that we narrowed Broadway Road, which was another access point to the 10, and, and with hopes that people would move over to either southern or to baseline. So, I, I completely understand what, what you're saying in regards to the traffic specifically from that Broadway Road narrowing, and expecting them to take that baseline, um, access to be able to get to the 10 and off.
Correct. So now, uh, I'd like to speak to one, um, I think that we've been attempting to talk about in terms of what the traffic is. Um, I heard a couple of the council members, I think, stated, and I'll use the terms that I'm familiar with, which are called sightlines. So, sightlines are basically, as you, as you are approaching an intersection, you have lines of sight where you are picking up visual cues in terms of what traffic you have to deal with. Okay? So as you are, if you are coming south on Roosevelt Street, approaching baseline, your first sight cues are gonna be the traffic in the center lane, trying to make left turns. We have traffic trying to make left turns both into the apartment complex on the south side, and into the current business that's on the north side of, of baseline. Then your next traffic, your next sightlines are going to be the left-turn traffic from Kyrene coming, and then, going around, you're gonna have the, uh, right-hand traffic turning out of the current car wash, and then you have the bus stop. So those are all the line, those, all the sightlines you have to process as you approach. So what this project is doing is, it's adding another one, meaning it's adding more decision criteria as you come up to the intersection, meaning there's more confusion, there's more, there's more issues that the drivers have to deal with. So what we would like, or what we're asking, is we're asking for assistance from the city in terms of what could be done to simplify the intersection, make it safer. Um, I heard a number of four accidents, and I just have to say, my nine-year-old would have laughed, because he's a big fan of Engine 271, and he's seen it more than four times this summer. That's all I'm gonna say. Uh, I don't know where the data comes from, I've called city and tried to find it, I couldn't get it. Uh, ADOT has some of it, but I haven't gotten my permission to get into their data yet to be able to get the accident data from the state, so I can't get that. Uh, but I would say Engine 271 run logs alone would demonstrate there's a far more accidents at that intersection than four in the last three years. And any resident, and we have a few here today, I think they would support that assertion, there's far more than four accidents. Uh, so, that's about all I can say. How, I'm sorry, I don't have numbers to support that. So that's really all I wanted to talk about. We do believe it's a dangerous intersection, and we'd like assistance. I don't know that a traffic light is the right solution, um, I really don't. Uh, I don't know what the solution is, I'm not a traffic engineer. Would love to work with somebody, with a team to be able to come up with, so how do we make that intersection safer? We've got two, three uncontrolled driveways right now within 150 feet, they have no control on the access, that's a rare occurrence, especially with the high volume. Two apartment complexes are very large, over 700 vehicles on each one. Our tiny community, we're only 98 homes, so we don't contribute that much, but those apartment complexes do. I totally agree, there will be no increase in traffic on baseline because of the Starbucks, but what you're going to get is you're gonna get more incidences of these sightlines, meaning you're gonna have more traffic trying to enter baseline in a very narrow area where other people are trying to enter baseline, and that's a danger.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilor Granville?
I can ask just a quick question to you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, 'cause I, the, the thing that you point out, 'cause I, I've come down Kyrene a bunch of times, and there's just, there's a lot coming at you from a lot of ways that you're trying to figure out. Uh, the only solution I've come up with, and as I've sort of racked my brain on this for the last week or two, I'm curious to hear your thoughts on it, is putting something in that turn lane on the left-hand side, so that it excludes people from pulling into it, waiting, and then pulling across traffic. But my assumption is, is that if we ever suggested that, the apartment complex to the south would have an equal number of people here upset, um, and that maybe even other neighbors who aren't here in the north would be here equally upset. And so I just, while that seems like one way to limit all of the people turning everywhere, I don't know if that's the case where the medicine isn't worse than the disease?
Um, you know, honestly, it, the best solution, and we, but we'd have to turn back the clock five years, would have been if there was an easement had been applied at the car wash facility, and so from the commercial properties, all of the entrance and exit had gone through the light. That solution would have been optimal, probably would have made the, that intersection so much safer and easier for everybody in the area. But that, that day is past, unfortunately, um, and I realize that. I, I don't know, median, I agree, that's the only thing I've come up with, I thought the exact same thing you did, which is, but there's gonna be plenty of people that are gonna grouse. I, I don't know the solution, which is why I'd love to be a participant in trying to come up with something. Um, to me, uh, our goal is, we should be trying to save property and people lives. Um, there were two markers on the north side of baseline, there were three on the south side before they redid the pad, so there's been at least five deaths.
Just to be clear, you're, you're, it's not really a proposal, 'cause anything you put in there is gonna cause some sort of traffic that's gonna come out.
Yes.
So you're, you're just.
Looking for a solution.
Solution, okay, thank you.
It is, exactly, sir. The property owner deserves to develop the property, that, that's understood, and it should be developed. They, they've got a proposal that's consistent with what the city intends to be developed there. I'm just saying, can we come up with a way to make it a safer area, just for the people living there?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janice, uh, Monday? If I read, yeah, Monday?
Is this the, the one that's kind of up? Yeah, there we go, so we can see the entrance. We have two ways into, I'm Janice Monday, and I'm a resident of Casa.
You stand by the podium?
I'm Janice Monday, and I have been a resident of Casa Fiesta for 20 years. And I am concerned also about the traffic. We are currently almost prisoners in our neighborhood with the current traffic, and I intend to show you maybe what the picture, and I'm going to concentrate only on an area that has not been talked about before, and that's Hardy and Minton. Over at Hardy and Minton, here is what we see morning and night, most of the time. Even the vehicles for fire have a hard time getting through the suicide lane, because there is an island that locks in front of these other apartments that are on Hardy. So not only do we have Familia here, we have a large con, uh, uh, complex of apartments over here. So, there is a nice sign that says, "Don't block the intersection." You see what we see? They block it anyway. We can't turn left, we can't get out at Hardy and baseline now, a great deal of the time. Look at the traffic, it frequently goes from baseline to university. When you're lucky, and you time it right for the light, you can turn right from that intersection, from Hardy and Minton. Here is a letter from one of our gentlemen that could not be here tonight, but he is a former director or of ADOT. This morning at the DRB meeting, they were cleaning up a crash that sent the truck, uh, well, I'll let Bruce handle this, 'cause he's gonna take the other entrance, 'cause we have only two ways in and out of our subdivision. We have this one that I just talked to you about, and then we have the one that is next to the proposed zoning change. Okay, so that you can see that. Uh, I'll let Bruce take the letter from the ADOT people, but I think that gives you a little, what we need, and this is what our ADOT man said, a traffic impact study looking at the off-site points of traffic conflict. Don't make us prisoners in our own neighborhood, please.
Thank you, Ms. Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Let's map back up again. First of all, I'd like to say that it's my belief that the DRC was faulty in their reasoning when they recommended this proposal, they based it on similarity between our neighborhood and the Burger King and gasoline station recently put in at the, at the Fries on the other side of I-10. What they failed to take into consideration is, there's a stoplight there. There's a stoplight 250 feet from the stoplight at I-10. Here we've got about 450 feet, not that much larger, but as has been pointed out, we have four left turns, with the possibility of a fifth being added, plus there's three right There was an accident at this intersection just the day after the DRC met. Person came through Kyrene, ran into cobblestone car wash, and almost hit the, hit the island with the gasoline pumps. That could've made a real nice inferno. The traffic on baseline is exacerbated by the fact that there's bus stops in the lane on baseline, and it's right at Kyrene. So you have traffic trying to come around, make left turn from the two inside lanes, the outside of those two lanes has to stop and back up behind the bus. And you can see here, there's a dirt, uh, kind of a thing, like originally, maybe the plan was to have another lane there. If this proposal was approved, it should have a D cell lane for traffic to get off the road, and the bus should be moved off the road too for parking. That would certainly help to facilitate traffic. I have a letter from Mr. Tom Huyke, who was Director of Merkelpa County Department of Transportation, and he refers to this crash in this letter, and then he says, "The city needs to require an onsite circulation study and a traffic impact study, looking at the off-site points of traffic conflict. It is derelict for the city staff to simply declare that the development will not add a significant additional amount of traffic to this surrounding area." They have proposed changing the zoning from residential to two intense commercial land uses requiring two special use permits, which are drive-throughs. If they had left the three splits as one parcel, they might have been able to make the proposed uses work in concert, as in the case at Pepperwood Plaza. He goes on to say two other things, one, the onsite drive entrance for this proposed project is only 23 feet wide, which is really substandard. And the easternmost cobblestone drive and the proposed additional new drive east of there does not provide adequate site entrance, only 385 feet for right turns, and greater than 400 feet for left turns. His recommendation was that the proposal should be denied unless it's reworked to meet the adequate traffic safety standards, 'cause that's our primary concern here, not the development, but the safety of the neighborhood. One other point I would like to make, uh, it was mentioned that the apartment owner is in favor of this development, I would like to mention that the apartment owner is the owner of the lot in question, so I can see why he would approve it. I would also point out that we had a proposal last year about this time, the gentleman that owns the Taco Bell on the south side of baseline wanted to put it on this lot, and we had an initial meeting with him and expressed our concerns, and he said, "Okay, I don't wanna build there anymore." And he moved back to the south side of baseline at the corner of Hardy. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a copy machine available?
With me.
I actually have an X-ray.
Okay, okay.
I think you, I think your wife has an X-ray.
Okay.
Thank you.
Or we could make a copy. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, those are all the cards I have for this, again, this is a first hearing item. Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address us? Could you please get my attention now? Now would be a good time to do so, to add to this conversation. Yes, please come forward. Make sure you state your name and residence for the record.
Good evening, Melissa Moore, 572 Westminster Drive, Casa Fiesta. I just wanted to say, um, the apartments, the Mark Taylor Apartments, La Familia, it's not an emergency access or exit only, um, there's about 750 residents that do live there that utilize that every morning and evening, you know, so everyone has access to that.
Oh, okay.
Out on Roosevelt.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else in the audience was wishing to address us on, on this issue? All right, seeing none, I would ask the applicant to come back up. Any, any more questions from the council on this? I think we, we have a couple of comments. One is, um, and, and I, I share the concerns of Mr. Cristinelli, we, we, obviously, it's a vacant piece of land, it's been vacant ever since I can remember, even before Cobblestone, I mean, I just, it's been like that for quite some time, and I, baseline is, is a crazy road. What can we do? And I, I, I'd task our staff to train down in the next meeting to see what we can come up with, to help, um, I don't know where that bus, bus stop is, if it's even there, if we can figure out how we can work to add, pull out somewhere, if it makes sense, I don't, like, again, I don't know where the bus stop is, if we can resource that. And then also, work with our engineer, our traffic engineers, to see what we can do to help mitigate some of the concerns that, uh, Mr. Cristinelli mentioned, because I, I mean, I drive it quite frequently, at busiest times of days, and it, it is a lot coming at you, even as Councilman Granville mentioned. Would that be okay with staff, if we asked our, our staff, or council, to ask our staff to work to see what kind of mitigation efforts we could put in to help with the traffic? I wouldn't just say for baseline, I would also say for Hardy, for those that travel Hardy. I, I, I share the Monday's concerns as well, um, and if there's some, as, as Ms. Moore just mentioned, that if there's some concerns with access from the multifamily units on emergency exit or access only, that, that should be a concern for us, that we should look at as well.
Oh, it's a regular.
It's an exit.
We can't hear.
Oh, I see, they use your, I got you. We can look at that as well.
Yeah, we can't hear, we need to have them.
Yeah, Ms. Sinder? And then, uh, Councilman Ernando has some comments, she's like.
I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Mayor, that, um, it, it's an exit only and emergency exit, is what she was saying.
Yeah.
But it's not.
It's not.
But, they're saying it's not.
So, we'll, we'll clarify that, we'll help out.
Oh, you better not go, I'm going.
Councilman Ernando Savage?
No, I, I, just, just a couple of comments, and I, I've had an opportunity to talk to Mrs. Sinder in regards to some of my concerns about this project. I mean, first, I wanna say a couple of really positive things, and I think my, my colleague, Councilmember Navarro, brought it up in regards to, um, another Starbucks that came to town not too far down from my street, and, uh, I wouldn't say it was I always want to say, you know, for any developer that wants to come and be part of our Tempe business family, we certainly do appreciate that. You know, but I got to tell you, I do, I share the concerns of the residents on this one, and when it comes to safety, not only just with traffic, but also with pedestrian traffic, too, and the sightlines that were brought up. I think we talk about all the time about being a 20-minute city, about being able to walk places, and if you really look at this picture that we're looking at now, you've got the trailer park over here, and you've got the two-apartment complex really close, and the neighborhood in the north, I would hope that a lot of them would want to come and walk, you know, to those two places. And I think that we need to be cognizant always of pedestrian safety. I think that's kind of one of the things that we certainly need to do. I 100% agree with the mayor that I think that we need to look at how we can definitely make that intersection safer. I tell you, I drive down that road fairly frequently, and baseline is backed up frequently, and I am a frequenter of that car wash. That's my car wash. So I do go there very often, and I do realize that I think there are some serious traffic concerns, and we may not be pulling traffic, creating more traffic, because it's not a destination-type of a location, but you're actually creating an intersection that I think has a lot more opportunities for accidents, and I really worry about pulling people in may not be as bad, but getting people out is definitely a concern. And I don't want anybody to feel like they're a prisoner in their own neighborhood. That's just not fair, and we don't want to, we don't want to do that. So I'm hopeful that you and the staff can work together and talk to the residents a little bit and address some of their concerns, because right now, I'm really happy about a lot of things, but I'm very concerned about the safety, and that will always take precedent in my mind.
Quick question.
Yeah, Councilmember Navarro?
Who owns the property? Is it Mark Taylor?
Apartment complex.
Trying to find out. The entity name is different.
Yeah, it's owned by Mark Taylor.
Yeah.
Property in question.
There's a different entity name on that, so we've got to find out who the parent company is on that, so we'll find that out. Yeah. And, you know, obviously, the management company has to analyze whether or not they're okay with the project as well, so it's not just the seller, it's the management company, it's the actual arm of the company that's looking out for its residents to see whether or not they're comfortable with it as well. Can I make a clarification, too? The traffic reduction on baseline that I had mentioned earlier, that traffic analysis was done by the city every few years, it takes into account the traffic between Hardy and Kyrene. It's that particular specific area. It doesn't go any further down towards the freeway. It's that area that I was mentioning on baseline between Hardy and Kyrene that has been reduced over the last two years. And then I think Chuck had looked up the traffic on baseline, the ADOT information, and we'll have to clarify this, but it looks like that 213 or 200 and whatever number is actually the freeway traffic, but we'll have to clarify that as well. But that's two miles away, so never mind. But our analysis on baseline, right in front of the site, that's what I was talking about. So it was right there in front of the site. I wasn't talking about, like, up and down baseline, it was right there in front of the property. That was our analysis of the traffic reduction.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, this is just the first hearing, so there's some work that needs to be done. You heard some of the comments from the residents, and the comments I made with our staff to work with to see how we can work at mitigating some of the challenges with the traffic there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next meeting, item six, or next meeting, next item. Is introduced to hold a first public hearing, adopted in ordinance amending City of Tempe Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 3 relating to the powers and duties of the Tempe Arts and Cultural Commission. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for September 27, 2018. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us on this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. I close that portion. Any comments or discussion from the council on item 6P3? So one of the things that... Yes, Councilmember Adams?
I have several comments or questions. Eventually, I'll learn that. Okay, I have just a couple of questions. It says in the report that the reports are going to go to the commission quarterly, and I'm wondering if we can have those go to the council instead, for them, the commission to present to the council instead of to community services.
Is there any...
It would be good for council to be more involved in this.
Instead or in addition?
No.
In addition.
In addition, not instead.
In addition, yes.
The whole point is, we're, the concept of this is, we're looking at adding more members, and we're changing the authority of the commission to be more of an oversight committee as it relates to the arts and cultures in our community. And by doing so, they're going to be reporting back to the Arts Commission, and they make recommendations to the council.
How?
So you're asking for an additional, instead of recommendations, well, the Arts Commission's going to come make recommendations to us anyways.
Well, I would like them to do a financial report to the council in addition to the community services. Right now, it says in the background information that it's going to go to community services, and I would like the council to also have a presentation made.
Yeah, where we could do it, we could have that at the IRS, yeah.
Or could we have that in Friday packet, perhaps? Or could we have that information presented in a Friday packet when it's sent to community services? Is that, would that be...
How many are we trying to do, because...
I just want, I want council to be more involved and have closer communication with the tax and TCA.
And I agree with you. So one of the things I think we're looking at is, if, whenever the Arts and Cultural Commission gets recommendations, when it's presented to the Arts and Cultural Commission, they should be, we should have them present at the next available IRS, the findings and what happens on a quarterly basis.
Yes.
So if they, if they report to whatever the Arts Commission comes up with, then with the recommendations, they should be reporting any information to us on a quarterly basis.
That's correct.
And I think that should happen at a future IRS. Is that...
That's correct. That's what I'm asking for.
Councilmember Granville?
Let me just chime in on that as well, because I think I was able to suss out what you guys are talking about, but the concern that I had, a million years ago, I served on the Arts Commission, and candidly, it wasn't, and this was way before any of our staff was working on it, so I'm not calling our staff. The way it worked, if it's the way our current one will work, I think it would be a failing, because the way it happened is, staff would sort of talk to us about what was going on, and we might have opinions, and it was a very advisory opinion that we gave, right? Staff would say, "Well, thank you for your feedback, we'll think about that." And we didn't, never really knew what happened after that, and we certainly couldn't steer policy with a vote at that time. At least, it didn't feel that way. I, given with what's going on, I want to make sure that that's not the way this happens this time. I would, candidly, I would rather that it was the commission that was presenting it, because right now, it says, where does it say? To advise and recommend to the city council through the community services department.
Right.
Is what it says. I would rather that it said, "To advise and recommend to the city council with the assistance of the communities," or something like that, so that the community council is the one making the discussion, and staff is helping out, but as opposed to they provide the feedback and staff makes the presentation.
Judy?
You got to be kidding me.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to provide a little more information. Some of these recommendations came about at the request of residents who had some input in this process, and as proposed, it would be, you can't hear me. Okay, as proposed, the Arts and Culture Division would be reporting on financial matters on a quarterly basis to the Arts and Culture Commission. The commission already reports to the mayor and city council on an annual basis. We could certainly increase the number of reporting to you. I just wanted to point out that there is an existing process for all commissions to report to the mayor and to the council.
I think the thing that I would, that might provide me some help, and maybe, maybe this doesn't have to be a formal language, but just an informal policy, is I'd love the commission to have an up or down discussion and vote, and for that to be a part of what we are presented, because at least when I served on it a million years ago, we would provide feedback, and it would just sort of go into the ether, and I don't know to the extent that that was incorporated or brought forward to council, you know, weeks or months later. I just, I agree with Councilmember Adams. I think the more we can formalize the citizen role in this and provide, and I think the better off we are.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage, and then Councilmember Adams?
You know, I think, I think I kind of get it. I know this is only the first read, so it's probably a good time to have this conversation. I just wonder, though, too, are we treating this one in particular commission different than we're treating all the other ones, and are we setting a new precedent in regards to the way our policy is and what we want? So I would say, before we jump in with two feet, that we might want to think about what precedent we're setting, if this is something that we're going to want to do and a new responsibility we're going to want to take on. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just thinking we need to really be careful about making, you know, sweeping changes, and then the expectation of having that happen with the other commissions, too.
Good point. Vice Mayor?
I wanted to second your point, and while I really sympathize with wanting to have more information, maybe to have four meetings a year or IRS would really take up a lot of time on our calendar, and perhaps we could compromise somewhere and have some Friday packets. I mean, always have the information in a Friday packet and then have presentations every, you know, twice a year or something.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor, I want to ask this to Andrew, our city manager. Mr. Ching, I thought at one time we had talked about trying to do something that would have our commissions actually report to the council, like, on an annual basis, to do, like, an update, and I know you and I have talked about that, because I knew the Veterans Commission was very excited, and they wanted to come and talk about it, and we were kind of working on a new policy and a practice to be able to make that happen. Have you had the opportunity to, you know, figure out what that might look like moving forward? And it wouldn't be just with one commission, it would be something that we can rotate all the commissions through within reason, because I, I mean, I think it's important that we definitely hear what their work and the things that they're doing, and their suggestions and their recommendations. I don't know where that ended up landing.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage, members of council, that, what you're talking about, I think ultimately resulted in the creation of the annual reports for all of the different various boards and commissions. That process, because they're reporting to you on their activities, is an opportunity to select reports by council, or the member of council at an issue review session, to say, "We would like an in-person presentation from that particular board or commission to elaborate in person at an upcoming meeting." So that was, that was the vehicle that was ultimately decided upon on that. Certainly, we can look at that, we can look to see whether or not there are, council's direction is to have specific boards and commissions present in addition to their report. That's certainly something we can do for any of them, you know, and set some parameters as to what that would include.
One of the things I want to point out, if you look at what we're trying to do, we're changing the way the Arts, the Tempe Arts and Cultural Commissions and what their roles are. So we're, not only are we adding two new members to the commission, we're adding additional categories for sections of the commission members to add expertise for organizational development, public policy, financial analysis, which is something I think is what our city attorney Judy was mentioning regarding some of the recommendations from the citizens groups on accounting and financial, and then also current and former arts and cultural presenter and producer, arts administrator, curators, and art facility managers. That's all the categories we are looking at for the, of the makeup of the Arts Commission. In addition, we're looking at the, for the powers and the duties of this particular commission, because it is a little bit different, is to advise or recommend to the council through the community services department from the reports that they receive about operating the capital improvement budgets for the arts and the cultural based upon financial reporting. So it's important, it's up to us as the deciding body to look at these reports, to make recommendations based on information that is given to us by the Tempe Arts and Cultural Commission, and we're adding additional powers and authorities for those members to have that oversight, which I think is important, and I think that's what we're looking at. So we just want to make sure if we can have a better reporting mechanism, if staff can come back to us before the next meeting and update us for the second hearing, that we have some reporting measures in place that, so it really does actively engage with us. It could be a Friday packet, as Vice Mayor mentioned, but more importantly, it's up to us as council to make sure that we read these reports and the recommendations from the Arts and Cultural Commission based on the information they've had. So if, we're giving them more latitude and more authority, if you will, the Arts and Cultural Commission to look at some of the programming and the cost analysis, and it's going, how it's going to be reported to us. Robin, Vice Mayor?
And I would say, too, I think the one thing is, and I know we're going to, I'm very confident that the tax will pass in November, and we'll have that dedicated tax, which is great, but we do exactly the same thing for the Transportation Commission, too. So I think we need to, if there is some gaps or things that we're missing, or maybe we can look at, you know, maybe Andrew, you and your team and your staff can look at how the Transportation Commission is working, because I think we've actually put in some more strategies, actually, with this commission than we have with the Transportation Commission in regards to the individuals that have been selected or will be selected to kind of help fill those different roles moving forward. So, I mean, my thought process is, I always kind of try to look at the bigger picture, too, and not, you know, pinpoint on one particular thing, but making sure that we're following practice and policy, they match. I think that's really, really important, so I would entrust that Mr. Ching could kind of review that a little bit and maybe come back with some recommendations, you know, prior to our second read. But, you know, I'd like to give this a try, you know, the way it's written, and see how that kind of works itself out.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Arredondo Savage, we must be doing the Vulcan Mine Mel today, because that was my thought, too, the Transportation Commission is the other commission that oversees the tax. So whatever we think about with this commission, we should also think about for transportation.
I have one more question.
Yes.
The second bullet point is adding two additional categories for selection of commission members to add expertise to the following, and so the members that come off the term out of the commission, then would we have those applied to those two?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Anything else? All right, if there's no further comment, yes.
As a follow-up to what I had said previously, in taking what I'm hearing, one of the things that we would certainly consider and present, and we can talk about more at the next hearing, is since all the boards of commissions are already presenting an annual report to council, we could designate an issue review session at some point shortly after they're transmitted to council, to have that as an open agenda item, to have council members select specific boards and commissions that they want to have to present in-person reports, and maybe we just say, or you just say, that the reconstituted Arts and Culture Commission and the Transportation Commission are boards that you want standing reports from in addition to others, and we would just have that, and have the annual report be the vehicle to have that be a standing item at least once a year, and maybe break it up if there's more on IRS agendas in the future. We can start doing that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Next, the next agenda item scheduled for the second hearing and final adoption will be considered now. These items were read and introduced on August 9, 2018, and votes will be taken tonight. Ordinance and items for second hearing final adoption, item 6C1, is to hold a second final public hearing, adopted in ordinance amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 8, Section 2-245 regarding membership of the Transportation Commission. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under items 6C1? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Is any comments or discussion for the council on item 6C1? If not, look for a motion. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Cubey, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Councilmember Navarro's on the phone? Please vote.
Aye.
Item 6C1 passes. Passes seven to zero. Item 6C2 is to hold a second and final public hearing, adopted in ordinance amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 20, Section 2-365 regarding membership of the Tempe Veterans Commission. Is it a public hearing item? Anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C2? Could you get my attention? Seeing none. Any comments or discussion or motion on item 6C2? It's been moved by Councilmember Arredondo Savage, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes six to zero with Councilmember Keating absent. Next item is 6C3, is to hold a second and final public hearing, adopted in ordinance amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 13, by repealing, Chapter 14, Article 2, Division 1, Division 2 of Tempe City Code relating to fire prevention and protection and adoption of the 2018 International Fire Code, and amendments thereto. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C3? Yes, Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I want to, for this item and for 64, I want to thank staff. They have had the patience of code with me in trying to explain these to me, even going so far as to giving me to read the model codes to thumb through.
Chapter 13, by repealing, Chapter 14, Article 2, Division 1, Division 2, Tempe City Code, relating to fire prevention and protection and adoption of the 2018 International Fire Code and amendments thereto. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C3? Yes, Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. So first off, I want to, for this item and for 64, I want to thank staff. They have had the patience of code with me in trying to explain these to me, even going so far as to giving me to read the model codes to thumb through, which are about two-thirds Greek to me, but I did the best I could with the help of Google. And so first off, I want to thank all the staff who spent so much time sort of putting it in the most rudimentary, basic language for me. I'm, and so I hope staff doesn't think this is any reflection upon them. This is one of the harder ones I've had to come up with in a while. For 63 and 64, I'm going to vote no on both of those. I'm at least going to explain the 63 one. As a former teacher, I've taught American history five, six times. And five or six times, I taught the Triangle Shirt Fire. For those of you who don't know, it was when skyscrapers and tall buildings started. There were no fire codes or protections in it at the time. And so in 1911, a fire broke out and 146 people were killed. Because of the death of those people, we now have things like emergency exits and fire protections and sprinkler systems. But you could at least say in 1911, you know, tall buildings were new and they didn't know any better. The difficulty I have with our fire code now is we, when you group a group of people together in a hotel-like environment, we know what the risks are because we specifically have specific rules related to hotels. You have to have firewalls between the rooms so that if a fire breaks out, the whole place doesn't burn down. You have to have exit signs. You have to have sprinkler systems. You have to, and we do all of this because smart people have realized over 100 years that grouping large groups of people together can create fire hazards. Unfortunately, the state legislature doesn't view Airbnb and VRBOs in the same way that hotels are, even though they are exactly like hotels in the way they cram people in. And so if it were a hotel, you would have to do all of these fire protection things. If you just turn an eightplex into eight Airbnbs, which looks an awful lot like a hotel, you don't need fire doors, you don't need fire sprinklers, you don't need exit signs, you don't need firewalls between the buildings, you don't need any of that, which we know you need with 100 years of experience. So the legislature won't let us do anything about that. So I'm stuck with the difficult question of, do I vote on a better fire code that I know is unsafe because of the legislature, but it is better than the 2012 one we've got? And at the end of the day, like not, in no reflection away on staff, I can't do that because I can't have voted in favor of something that is our next, like, Triangle Shirt Fire.
The question I ask you, how do you know it's unsafe? And why would our firefighters not be the arbiters of that, since that's their area of expertise? I don't get where your evidence is that it's unsafe, because a lot of cities are adopting an amendment of codes.
So that's a great question. So let me explain why I believe it is unsafe. Hot calling the kettle there. So yeah, so why do I believe it's unsafe? Because smarter people than me have created stricter codes for things that we call hotels that look exactly like Airbnbs, but that we don't call hotels. And so if they look and act and density-wise, they're all the exact same way, I have to assume that if this is the same as this, then the code for this must logically need to have been applied to this. And so it's not like I'm just making up off the top of my head. I'm deferring to the hotel codes, which, which are not applicable to Airbnbs. The one thing I would ask, and maybe I'm lucky and staff and council will go along with me on this, is that our fire chief at least put out a list of suggestions for people that do Airbnbs. We couldn't make it mandatory, but a list of suggestions to say, look, if you're going to do an Airbnb, we can't require it, but we would request that you have a smoke alarm in every room, as opposed to just the central room. Or that you have carbon monoxide, or that you have fire extinguishers, which right now only, on average, about 40% of Airbnbs have. That maybe you have a first aid kit, or whatever you think is appropriate, whether that be not hollow interior doors. I have no idea. And that, not that we require it because the state won't let us, but that we at least publish it and say, if you wanted to have a best practice, here is what we would suggest as a best practice, at least as a starting point. And thank you for your time.
Hey, you're right. I almost pushed a button on there. All right. Any other comments or question?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, Councilmember Aradona Savage.
Just, just a couple of things. I mean, first and foremost, I mean, this is our second read, and I hate the fact that, you know, here we are asking for some major things to happen in a second read. I think that's kind of insulting to the professionals that have been working on this for over six months and done their homework to make sure that they're bringing us the best, most current document that they believe keeps our city safe. And I want to say thank you for them, to them for that. And I, I do appreciate the work that they've put into it. Is it perfect? Is anything that we do perfect? I don't think so. There's a room for improvement, probably. But at the same time, you know, I trust the professionals that have worked really hard in our department to make sure that they are keeping our city safe at, at every turn. So I, I say thank you for that. And, you know, I'd like to move for approval, Mayor.
There's been, okay, there's a, Councilmember Aradona Savage, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Council, Vice Mayor Cubey has a question?
Yeah, just maybe address this to Chief Reese, but I was of the understanding that the code, fire code, the amendments apply to commercial buildings and not to residential buildings. Is that correct?
Greg Reese, can you, you got me?
Yeah.
Greg Reese, Fire Medical Rescue Chief.
David Fabok, Lead Fire Inspector.
And can you repeat, so we get, so we're accurate or?
So 63, the fire code changes, fire prevention, protection, and adopting the code, isn't it applicable to commercial buildings? Or is it also applicable to residential buildings, residences?
I can answer that. The International Fire Code does refer to single-family homes in the aspect of water supply and fire department access. That is it.
That's it? So, okay. That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. There's been a motion and there's a second. Thanks, Chief. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes six to one with Councilmember Granville voting no. Next item is item 6C4, is to hold a second final public hearing adopting ordinance amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 8, by repealing the existing Chapter 8 relating to buildings and building regulations and adopting the Tempe Administrative Code, the 2018 International Building, Building, Residential, Existing Building, Mechanical Plumbing, Fuel, Gas, Energy Conservation and Pool and Spa Codes, the 2017 National Electric Code, and amendments thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there, I do have some cards on this as a public hearing. I have Mr. Marcus Myers. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record.
Stuck it out. I, Marcus Myers, I live at 1058 East West Churchill Drive in Tempe, Arizona. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thanks a lot for letting me speak up here. Started the journey about a year or so ago with Mayor Cubey, Vice Mayor Leon Cubey, about basically I, the IECC 2018. And I actually run the Department for WSP Engineering for Commissioning and Energy Services located in Tempe. So I'm actually a commission agent as well. So this, actually talking about commissioning. So I do believe that we're, if it's adopted, we'd be one of the first cities in Arizona to actually have a compliance checklist, which is basically one of the best steps you can take in actually assuring that any system, commercial system, not residential, above 40 tons, actually has to be commissioned. So mechanical, electrical, plumbing, systems, lighting, basically the intent of the owner. So the owner's project requirements actually get fulfilled. And so there's actually verification and documentation that actually has to be submitted to the city. Even though it's been in the code for about 10 years, there's no enforcement. So I do, actually on the West Coast leads, I do work in Seattle, Denver, you name it, everywhere. And everywhere else has that, but we don't. So by Tempe doing this, this is quite a great step. And I'm also a Sun Devil, so.
All right. Works up. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Lauren, once again, for everything you've done.
All right. If there's any other comments, is there a motion on item 6C4? Yes, Vice Mayor Cubey?
Mayor, Mayor, I believe you had another card.
Oh, I do. I'm sorry. Mr. Don Price.
Yes. Mr. Price was unable to stay, but he did leave a statement for the record. He's in support of.
Okay. I'm sorry. I was holding it. Been holding these all night. All right, there's, Vice Mayor Cubey?
I just want to credit Chad Weaver and Chris Thompson for the incredible work and diligence. And thank you so much for starting on this journey. I know that this is a really long process. It's just a short paragraph, but I know how much work went into this in consultation with buildings and developers and other cities. And it's, it's been a long, long haul. And I know you took the best examples from Denver and Seattle and other cities and looking at the, the commissioning checklist and developing a special inspection certificate and commission compliance checklist. This is the nut and bolts. It really ensures that that the contractors and the subcontractors, the builders, builders, the plumbers, electricians do what they say they are going to do. And it is so important. We've seen time and time again, when we don't have compliance checklist, that things can go awry. So I just really want to credit you and, and thank you so much for your patience with me, because I'm not exactly a technical expert here, as you very well know. So thank you so much for answering all my questions and concerns and for bringing us to this point. And we're going to be hopefully adopting the 2018 Energy Code. And we're really pushing the energy envelope with this code. And I'm really proud to, to be a part of this. Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
That has been moved by Vice Mayor Cubey, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. Councilman Navarro?
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next item? Item 6C5 is to hold a second final public hearing adopting ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment and restated development agreement, deeds and land and improvement lease and memorandum of lease and additional documents with Hensel Phelps Development LLC relating to the project to be constructed at 100 South Mill Avenue. This is a second hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C5? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6C5 or a motion, since they've been waiting here all night? It's been moved by Councilmember Aradona Savage. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. Councilman Navarro?
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. Next is item 6C6, to hold a second final public hearing adopting ordinance authorizing a dedication of land on Dorsey Lane between Lemon Street and Don Carlos Avenue for the use as a public right-of-way and authorizing the city engineer to execute a declaration and related documents. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address item 6C6? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Is there a motion on item 6C6? Moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Aradona Savage. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Item 6C7 is to hold a second final public hearing adopting ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of a waterline easement located at the northwest corner of Tempe Town Lake. It's Cossar Road, property of L. Phoenix LLC. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C7? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Is there a motion on item 6C7? Moved by Councilmember Adams. Is there a second? Is there a second? You lead?
Second.
Second. All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Aradona Savage. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next is item 6C8, is to hold a second final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing a partial abandonment of a waterline easement located at the northwest corner of Tempe Town Lake. It's Cossar Road, property of Watermark Tempe 1 LLC. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address us, please get my attention. If not, is there a motion from council on item 68? Moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Aradona Savage. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Item 69 is to hold a second final public hearing adopting ordinance for a zoning map amendment to PCC-2 as a client area development overlay consisting of seven commercial buildings ranging from 15 to 12 stories on approximately 18 acres and a development plan review for Phase 1 consisting of a six-story biomedical research office and a six-story parking structure for the idea Tempe located 1,000 West Rio Slade Parkway. The applicant is Barry Riddell LLC. This is a public hearing item. Would the applicant like to make a statement? Miss right out. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor. And members of the council, I will do my best to be brief. I know those are dangerous words out of a lawyer. But if I could ask you guys to kindly pull up the presentation, just to hit on a couple of points since we were here not too long ago. I know that the council's already extremely familiar with this site. It is a site that you also know is currently being repeded. It is a site that was a subject of an RFP, was the subject of a development agreement. And everything we're here talking about tonight is completely consistent with that development agreement. We are here requesting a rezoning. It's relatively apparent, I think, to everybody that the existing zoning on site is not the highest and best used. It's kind of a mix. And the, the purpose here tonight is to be able to rezone it to a project and a campus that makes sense and maximizes the investment here near the lake. So we're requesting to rezone to PCC-2, PAD, to incorporate the campus here with office research, hotel, parking garages. And we're also asking approval, approval for Phase 1. So Phase 1 here, you see with the garage, and then the PAD establishes the framework for future development. We also show as part of this proposal, three different kind of conceptual layouts. Because as I mentioned, Phase 1 is really all we have today, all we know with certainty today. So you'll see here conceptual layouts of what this could ultimately be. Wanted to briefly touch on the height as well. This is an exhibit that's intended to show you the maximum height permitted, which is 185 feet. It does drop down across the site because of the FAA. I wanted to point that out because in the legal notice, it talks about stories five to 12. That was really illustrative. Everything here was about the maximum height that could ultimately be with subsequent applications coming forward through DRC as they evolve. So again, conceptual layout intended to show options of the way the site could develop. And again, Phase 1, Becton Dickinson, future tenant. We're very excited that they're coming and they're committed to this site. We really appreciate all of staff's hard work that we could bring this application through quickly, ultimately to ensure that there'll be these 600 jobs, these high-paying jobs here in Tempe. We've also worked very closely with the community to make sure that the screening that occurs between the garage, between Phase 1 going forward, is here modular reusable metal panels. We talked last time, we do have a second option, which is to have temporary screening that would be part of a jury art competition. So something we've worked closely with the arts community here, something that would be on Boyer's tab. This is not in lieu of the art commitment, but that could be done to really show the commitment here to art and really be something that's more collaborative. And these are just some conceptual renderings. Again, we really only know Phase 1, but you see the potential opportunity of what can come, the TCA annex here. I wanted to include this to show, I know there's been a little bit of discussion about the TCA space, the design of the TCA space. We have not designed it yet. We were not tasked with designing it yet. You as the council, when you want that to occur, can ask us to do that. One of the things we were asked to do was to take the information in the study that they have of the uses and show that they could fit within the footprint. So that's what we have done. We have not designed that space, but you can see that there is a lot of opportunity for that design to, to meet the needs going forward. And we look forward to working through that with the community. Again, just a conceptual rendering to give you an idea of what could come. Use permits that accompany this to allow entertainment, outdoor vending, and a hotel. And the art requirement, that's something we're also working closely with staff and are committed to, you know, per the development agreement here as well. Just to give you an idea, the type of lighting. And then one very last point that we have worked out with staff. There was one stipulation that we would ask for some additional language to be added to. Stipulation 23 asks that there be variation in building height of 20 feet between adjacent buildings separated by less than 100 feet. We would ask that the additional language, unless otherwise approved by DRC, be included. The idea here is, we felt that there may be an opportunity or reason that those buildings would want to be closer together. would want to be closer together, and if there is a slight variation, we don't necessarily want to be kicked into a totally different building code or building classification. So the presumption here is that you don't have identical buildings. That's been very clear, but we want to provide the opportunity from a design perspective, if it makes sense, to make our case. So that's what we're asking. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So this is a public hearing item. It's a second hearing item. So is there anyone else? I don't have any cards. Oh, I do. Mr. Yates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I attended the DRC meeting with regard to this project, and there were so many questions that were asked that just were not answered. For instance, could we expand on the 10 spaces for public parking? That couldn't be answered. This is a biomedical research office and a hotel. Back in September of last year, I think it was the 29th, we approved the pier, which had 290 units, 225 feet high, 290 rooms. That's a lot of space for a hotel, and we really don't need another hotel in this area. This is right next to the TCA, and the TCA was adamantly opposed to this particular site and where it was, or not the site so much as what the building looked like, the aesthetics to it, were not appealing at all. The only kinds of things that we have for entertainment in the downtown area of Tempe are damage and the TCA. And I think that we should embark upon things that are in that nature. We need to see more entertainment, and we need to have, I mean, like where that last pier, if I'm not mistaken, there used to be a little bar there that had a lot of entertainment from rock bands and everything. I think I remember.
That was on the other side. That was called Nita's. That was way over in McClintock. That was called Nita's Hideaway.
Okay, you're right.
That was way down the road towards Mesa.
Okay, yeah, where was it? I'm sorry, that was the western. I apologize. But in any case, look, this is 18 acres, and it's going to get developed one way or another. We don't need a biomedical office building in a hotel here. This is something that is more endearing to people that like to walk along the lake, maybe go and have some fun somewhere. This is 85 feet higher than the TCA is, which is significantly higher. There are three parking garages, and the aesthetics to them are really bad. I mean, what would Frank Lloyd Wright say to this stuff? It's really, really bad stuff, and it needs to be considered, all of the aesthetics do. And to just imagine that, you know, we're going to have all these new jobs here, in excess of 600 new jobs here. Well, I think that's a pretty positive assumption that is going to fall far short of what those expectations are. We need to look into more of a pleasing look to Phoenix, anybody that is coming into Tempe. They don't just need places to stay, they need places to go, places to have fun. And that isn't what this is all about. This is all about biomedical jobs in a hotel, essentially, with really bad parking. It's all paid parking. And paid parking, you know, that is, for the neighborhood, going to create a real problem. People don't want to have to pay to park. They're going to go into the neighborhoods, and they are going to park there, and they're going to walk to where this is so that they don't have to pay. I couldn't believe it when they said, well, we have 10 spaces to park for the general public. That just blew me away. This is huge, and we couldn't even find out what building was going to go where. We didn't know exactly what was going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Your time is up.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only card I have. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us? Any comments? I'm looking at Mr. Brown. And just since I saw Mr. Brown, my understanding is Boyer did contract with John Keane and Architecton, who are the original architects of the Tempe Center for the Arts. So I know that the buildings that they're looking at are going to be complementing the Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us under item 69? Seeing none. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 69? Yes, Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Yeah, just really quick. I mean, first and foremost, I really want to thank everybody that's been involved in this project for many, many months, that have continued to work, to kind of whittle through, to try to make the very best project that we possibly can. I know not everybody agrees with where we landed, but I will say everybody's heart was in the right place. I mean, we agreed many, many months ago to move forward with a biomedical campus, so that was nothing new at all, and I 100% supported that. I think it's great and unique and something that really sets Tempe apart from our other cities and, you know, makes it kind of iconic. And of course, I think we all want something that complements the TCA, and I have no doubt that that's going to happen in the near future. The thought that, you know, obviously, we have to have our parking structure, what nobody loves, but to be able to see them really try to embrace arts within the project and the design itself, to me, is really, really important, because when people drive up and come to it, you know, being that it's right there on that south side, it's just really important that it's aesthetically pleasing for not only people that are coming to the facility, but that are driving by the facility. And I definitely have seen that. I know there's been some concerns about height and density, and I kind of look at it from the perspective of if, and people know that I've always kind of been somebody that doesn't really love height a whole lot, have some concerns about that, but if there's going to be height somewhere in the city, I don't think there's any better place than to put it over down by the lake and to have it set in an area where it can really complement the TCA. And I do think a hotel will do well there, because I think we want people to be able to come there. We want the 600 or more employees that are going to be on that campus to be able to host different events or conventions or whatever it may be, and I think that access makes it super easy and accessible for many. So, you know, I look at it and, you know, I get really excited. I know it's been a lot of work, and I just want to say thank you to everybody that's been involved. I know Donna and your team and Chad and your team have worked real hard, and Wendy, you guys, you know, thank you for being persistent, and thank you for being ever-changing and flexible, because that's been really, really important to get to where we are today. And, you know, I'm really excited to see this sucker come out of the ground. And I think, too, I mean, people got to remember, you've already invested money. I mean, there's already been an investment made. So to me, there's nothing better that shows good faith than to start a project when we haven't even finished this process. So I want to say thank you for your faith in us. We're really excited to be your partner in the future. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to move approval.
All right, there's a motion. I just want to make a couple of comments, and I think it's important to note that I agree with Councilmember Arredondo, but more importantly, there's been so much remediation that has taken place on this land, even to get to the art center for where it is today. And I think that that's something that we're taking a form of landfill and turn it into an office component, recreational opportunity that's going to benefit not only Tempe residents but future generations. And it really does fit within the urban core master plan that we have been looking at. And the buildings, what's important is going to, what's to come in the other phases, because you're going to have the black box theater space with the Tempe Center for the Arts that we're going to help design as part of the agreement. And there's been some concerns with, is it going to be 11 feet wide by 400 feet long to get to 40? No, it's not. It's going to be of use that we get to help design with the intent of the DRC. All the phases will be heard at future meetings with the Design Review Commission, because they're going to need DPR approval for the development plan review approval. This is exciting to see. I mean, we are in landlocked city, but to see a project of this magnitude, everyone coming together to make it to what we're seeing, it's only going to enhance the Tempe Center for the Arts tenfold and really get some great exposure for it. So I do support this project, and there's been a motion. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Vice Mayor Cubey.
Mayor?
Yes. And I was going to say the stipulation. I would like to ask Chad on stipulation number 23 that Ms. Riddell had, is staff good with that? Or is there any reservations? Support it? Microphone.
I just turned it off.
Well, then talk up to the microphone.
We are fully in support of the proposed amendment.
Okay. So is there a motion that includes the stipulation number, I believe it's 23?
Yes, I want to motion to 23.
So it's been amended to include stipulation number 23, and is there a seconded by Vice Mayor Cubey? Please vote. Councilman Navarro.
Aye.
Next is item 6C10, is to hold a second final public hearing and adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3 of the Tempe City Code relating to departments. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address us? Could you please get my attention? If not, is there a motion on item 6C10? Moved by Councilmember Cubey, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have current events and council announcements. Ms. Adams.
I'm here, Mr. Cubey.
Mr. Arredondo.
One quick just thank you. I don't think they're here right now, but to the public work staff, there's an alley in South Tempe we got a random email from about dumping, and I just forwarded it on and thought not much of it, truthfully, and thought, well, you know, our staff will do what they do. And they so wildly exceeded any expectations that anyone could ask of them. They met with the adjacent owners, they found out that there was an issue related to ownership and access, and went through all this stuff and just, and agreed to fence it off, and did all this stuff that ultimately ended with the property being quitclaim deeded to the city of Tempe so that we can maintain it and keep it and make it an amenity, and at some point maybe even put down some kind of DG or something and make it an area. And it all came from an email from a resident and a bunch of staff members that just went way above and beyond what anyone could expect. So to Don Bessler's department, as well as all of the people that worked on it, thank you very much, and I look forward to apparently a ribbon cutting someday on what's going to be done with this alley, or oversized alley, I guess I should say. So thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I just want to make note of the vote on Hayden House tonight. I think it was pretty historic, and it shows how the historic preservation community should be involved in the very beginning when we're talking about iconic historic places in our city, especially a place as central to Tempe in our history as the Hayden House. And I want to thank the Historic Preservation Commission and John Southard, our Historic Preservation Officer, and Mark Vincent especially for their contributions. It's really, it ends up being an ideal scenario that we hadn't foreseen, that we should have foreseen, and now we are faced as a council with developing the public use of that space, and that's a very exciting proposition before us. So I'm excited about that. Secondly, do you happen to have the, great, I would like to tell you about Kayla Gonzalez. 15 days ago, she was about to start her career at ASU. She was going to be a freshman on August 16th, and she was in a horrible accident, pedestrian accident, that my colleagues and I witnessed. We witnessed the aftermath as well, and she is student president for McClintock High School, 4.0 average, headed the key club, just a really involved student, and she broke both legs pretty severely, shattered pelvis that now is a titanium plate. A toe was severed, actually, at the scene, and we witnessed her terrible cries of pain that day. And it marked me. I didn't know Kayla, but I know her now, and a number of us, Team Kayla, we started a GoFundMe campaign. We've raised over $11,000, and I think just three and a half days, it shows what a compassionate community Tempe is. And Kayla, you know, from her work at Home Depot and her coworkers there and the ASU alumni group, and just so many groups are reaching out, and her family told me how amazing fire medical rescue personnel were with her. And she doesn't remember anything but the car coming at her, but she is an amazing young woman. It's going to take her over a year to start to maybe walk again, but she is going to do it, and she's doing it with the love and compassion and help from Tempe residents. So thank you to everyone who's contributed. You can still contribute to GoFundMe, just Google Kayla Gonzalez Needs Our Help, and you'll find that page. Thank you very much.
Councilman Navarro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Real quick, I just want to say two things. First off, obviously, you know, our hearts and prayers obviously go out to the McCain family, and I think a lot of people saw it on TV or were able to witness it, but I think the speeches speak for themselves about the man and his dedication and, you know, dearly will be missed, for sure. The second thing is I just want to-
It's really, really hard to hear you.
Okay. The second thing I wanted to mention is Tempe Fire, or reach out to our schools with the CCR program, the compressions-only awareness that we give our students. I mean, are you able to hear me?
Yeah, that's a lot better.
Okay. The compressions that we're able to give our students at each high school in the Tempe Union High Schools, we had a save last week where one of the students was able to utilize that training and start compressions until fire did get there, and we had a complete turnaround with the person having a heart attack, and it was a great save. And I just want to say thank you to Tempe Fire, to St. Luke's, and the hospitals that are helping out with the coordination, the SRO officers, great program that we do within our high schools, and just another save we got. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Councilmember Keating.
I'm here, Mayor Page.
All right, I only have two other ones. I just want to remind everyone that on Tuesday, September 4th of next week, regarding, we're going to have a public meeting regarding the shared active transportation vehicles, otherwise known as dockless bikes. It's also, there's an opportunity to make your comments on the Tempe forum, which is www.gov/Forum. It does close, the forum does close next Thursday, but on Tuesday, we're having a public meeting at the Don Costano Room at 6:00 PM, which is located at 200 East 5th Street. Then also, I just want to remind everybody, Forks Up, Sun Devil's first game on Saturday against University of Texas, San Antonio. Don't forget, if those that need a purse, it needs to be a clear bag. And also, please note, there's no reentry to the stadium, so if you go into the game, like you used to be able to go off and go to Bandersnatch. I know I'm dating myself because Bandersnatch is not there anymore, but it was good back then, but you cannot leave, once you leave the game, you cannot have reentry, so just so you know. With that, I'll close this comments section out, and then I will turn to our scheduled public appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda. Matters discussed by the public during public appearances cannot be discussed by the council unless they are specifically listed on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Speakers' visual aids and recorded tapes are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or become boisterous while addressing the city council or attending this meeting. Unauthorized remarks will result in removal of the council chambers, which means clamping, audience stopping at feet, yelling, or any other similar demonstrations. And with that, under scheduled public hearings, we have two scheduled. First one is Mr. Kim Baker. I don't see him. Next one is Mr. Bruce Ginsburg, regarding, proposed roundabout on McKellips Road and 68th Street. Mr. Ginsburg, good to see you.
I have a pair, so I'll try to get through this in three minutes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, my name is Bruce Ginsburg. I live in Marlboro Park Estates, which is a community of 177 homes. I've been on the board there for 34 years. Two days ago, I attended a meeting related to the roundabouts McKellips and College intersection. There were a number of people there attending. I believe there were more people for this than against at the time. We'll come to find out this meeting was not the first meeting. If one of the city's information was given to me by two members of the city that this was supposed to be the first, on your website alone, it shows that meeting took place prior to this on, with neighboring communities. And it's listed on the, inside the city website. This meeting took place and a number of nearby neighborhoods were given feedback. A solution was already in place. How is one to believe that the outcome of the meeting on Tuesday would have any effect when the determination was already happened? Why were there many people left out, like our community? With no input except from those who were at the meeting in the first place, a fair and equitable solution may be met when the solution was already been determined. Travel engineering said that they would have the final say, but since the drawing and other meetings took place prior to the meeting Tuesday, how does one believe that the alternative solutions would be heard? We saw no study given to us that took place for this specific site, even though they said there was given one, and about the roundabouts. This meeting may have taken place just to satisfy either federal or state standards. I believe that no matter what was said relating to this alternative solution, whether partial or total, nothing would be changed. Change would be needed, but this should have been done fairly to the communities. Given to, we had no input on the matter. There was cities, there was no answer to the questions we had on some alternative solutions. We brought up the thing about walking. We brought up the thing about baby carriages. We thought of the thing about bicyclists. We asked what alternatives would be. The only thing was possibly stop signs, and nothing else was given back to us. But the problem's going to be of what the answers, there was no answers to the questions we had. And the final determination was by traffic engineering, who was the one that brought us in the first place. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I believe staff is working with you, but I want to, where's Shelley? Can you come forward? Yes, it is. You can sit down. I think we're just going to get some questions. Can you, because this is, I mean, the first we're hearing about it, so can you let us know what's going on? And has everybody been notified properly? If we haven't, what are we doing? Or is this just an idea? Yes. You guys speak up? No, it's not on. There, green's on.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this intersection, we've done some analysis on it. It's currently signalized. It no longer meets warrant, the warrants for being signalized. So we looked at options, including the roundabout. Julian Druceing, our city traffic engineer, gave a presentation to you, I believe it was a couple of months ago, on roundabouts, and identified that this was one location of two where we were looking into the possibility of putting in a roundabout. The meeting that was referred to, and I did speak with Mr. Ginsburg on Friday, the meeting that he is referring to was an informal meeting with residents, some residents in North Tempe, just asking for possible solutions in terms of slowing traffic in that area. And this is one of the solutions that we identified. The online comment form is open through September 11th, and I've encouraged Mr. Ginsburg to comment. He did attend the public meeting, I understand. I was not at that meeting. And we will continue to take those comments, and then we can return to the council with those comments. We can provide those to you in a Friday packet. Certainly, the decision has not been made as to what we're moving forward with. We want to see what the community says prior to assessing it.
The only question I have is the meeting that you had with North Tempe Neighborhoods did, was everybody notified that there was a meeting taking place? Or was it?
I cannot-
How did, was that handled?
I cannot speak to that specific meeting. I was not in attendance at that either. It was my understanding that some residents had contacted Julian just with concerns, and so I don't know how that meeting took place, but I can certainly get back to you on the parameters surrounding that.
Councilman Arredondo.
Yeah, I know you guys have done a million of these, so I can't imagine this one's an exception to your standard of practice. I assume for all these sort of things, this would be the same, where you do mailer or door hanger, that little yellow card that comes to everyone who lives within a quarter mile and says, here's our meeting. Is that, that's still coming, I assume, right?
That was actually-
Or did that already happen?
Yes, that was provided in advance of the meeting that was held on Tuesday.
Okay. For that meeting, but what about the one prior to that?
So that one, again, it was an informal meeting of a few residents and, I believe, Julian. There wasn't notification. We wanted to obviously go out to the public. I explained to Mr. Ginsburg that it is something that we do more often is to bring a concept to 15%, which is what we had done in this case, so that we have something to show residents, and then we can get public comment back on.
So if I'm understanding correctly, three months ago, you and your staff presented to the council some ideas regarding some traffic calming in one of those areas. We were talking about roundabouts. This was one of the locations that was presented. Some residents in the North Tempe neighborhood contacted our staff as an informal meeting. Based on that meeting, you decided to have a public meeting to invite people to. No decisions have been made, correct?
That's correct.
No decisions have been made, so this is just information, fact-finding opportunity, and we already had one public meeting. I'm sure we're going to have more if there is a desire to move forward. Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
Okay.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Sure. I don't understand why, since we are a major community in the intersection, on the informal meeting, we weren't included in that meeting. The only people that were included in the meeting were people for the roundabout. There was nothing said to our community whatsoever that we could participate in giving possible feedback. I'm not saying that there wasn't, as she said, that this is not the final, but we had no input whatsoever given to the first meeting on what the possibility might be. That's all. I'm just saying, I think we left out-
Right, right. And I hear what you're saying. And I think what happened was you had some residents in North Tempe that contacted the city staff to talk about it, and then based on that, as we do on the normal practice, we decided we need to have a better, you know, makeup of the neighborhood. So that's when they mailed out and they had the public meeting. I'm sure there will be many more public meetings. So any resident, just so you know, could come up to, you can come talk to us about another issue, and it could be an informal meeting, and then all of a sudden, if it's a bigger issue, we're going to take it out to the residents and say, hey, what's happening with this? So apparently, this is something that we initiated. That's why I made that comment three months ago, four months ago. When we came back, we're looking at different ways in our community to help with some traffic calming, some instances where if it doesn't warrant a light, this is the next safest bet would be a roundabout. We have a lot of roundabouts in the Mitchell Ash neighborhood, by Mitchell Park, Hudson Manor, which is just south of Apache, and you've seen those all across the country. May not be the best solution, but this is something that we're looking at as a practice in terms of safety in our neighborhoods. And then that information was brought forward, and some proactive residents contacted city staff. You could contact us on any other issue pertaining to the city, and I'm sure we'd be happy to meet with you. It just so happened to be, it was your neighborhood with a roundabout that was looking, that staff was already proposing, that we'd get more additional feedback. So no decision has been made. We value your input. I thank you for coming down and talking to it. And hopefully, if we do move forward with any other stuff, that we're going to have any other type of meetings, that residents will be notified in advance so that we can have that conversation.
Yeah, we were never told about any meetings.
Like I said, once they said they were going to have a meeting, they notified the public, they sent out mailers, they put door hangers for a public meeting. This was something that was in front of that, was the initiative of certain residents in the community. That's-
No, I understand.
Okay. Thank you. With that, though, that does conclude our scheduled public hearing meetings, but we do have unscheduled public hearings items. Mr. Frank McCullough? I have, because he was scheduled, you were unscheduled. I couldn't, I couldn't have you come up there.
I also live in Marlboro Park Associates. I'm a member of the board. I'm a member of the board, and I live in Marlboro Park Associates. This was the mailer that was sent out to us last, week before last, telling us that, okay, you show up at this meeting, we're going to discuss this. That wasn't what happened at the meeting. That's what they told us was going to happen at the meeting. What Julian, I guess is his name, told us is, okay, the board has already given us approval, the council has already given us approval to go out and then start doing some design, and we're doing design work already on a roundabout. Okay, so that's what it is. Okay, I'm an engineer for 50 years. I worked several different DOTs. I was director of the Arizona Transportation Research Center at ASU. I've worked for National Academy of Science, a senior program manager, and I've also been a private consultant, so I have experience in the field. These people showed up at the meeting. Nobody took notes. There were a lot of comments from everybody in the corner. Nobody took any information down on what everybody was talking about. So in my opinion, I've held meetings all over the whole world. That is very, very poor practice, okay? What they did say at first is, okay, this Julian, I guess, he's the, he said that this is a very safe intersection, and that there's no problem with traffic there. So like I said, I'm 50 years an engineer, and doctors have, don't do anything, don't create any harm. Engineers have, if it's not broken, don't fix it. So this intersection is working. The reasons he gave us why you were thinking about changing the intersection is, this intersection was costing money for the electrical work and also maintenance going there every few, you know, half a year to look at the traffic signal. Well, you have same problem on all the other signalized intersections in the city, so I don't quite understand why this was picked out. Okay, the other thing that, as Bruce pointed out, they met with people north of the intersection. We, Marlboro Park goes from Weber all the way to McKellips, and we also go from McKellips all the way down to the other group of houses right down past where we are. We have three entrances in this area, two on College, one on McKellips. So anything that happens at that intersection greatly affects us. We also, most of our, a lot of our people who live in our community and also live in, you know, Marlboro Park Villas, we walk to the park. Walking across at that signalized intersection, which they want to get rid of, there's a walk signal there. We walk up, push the button, the light turns red. We have our walk across safely. You're talking about, both of you are talking about people getting run over. If you put in this, I guess I'm done?
What?
This light's turning on.
Yeah, because you have 20 seconds left.
Okay.
You have a three-minute time limit.
If you put in a roundabout, we have to dodge traffic to get across the roundabout. And I just, I'm 72 years old, I don't feel like doing that. The way the intersection works right now, we have, you'll get a red light, you can walk across the intersection. As I said, we have people with baby carriages. One of our board members' wife just had a baby, so we don't, we do not appreciate not being involved upfront on this case.
Thank you.
And we weren't.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I cannot respond to you because it's under unscheduled public appearances. I can only respond under scheduled public appearances.
Sir, did you have a handout or something for the council?
Well, I just have some notes.
No, no, he doesn't.
All right.
Next is, we have Kim Gaffey Loza. Could you please come forward? Then after that, we have Stan Hovey.
Hi. Kim Gaffney Loza. I live in 206 Papago Park, Circle South, and I'd just like to give some clarification because I think there's some misunderstanding about the meetings. It was actually our Papago Parkway meeting that asked Julian to come to it and speak to us, as we have had other people come speak at our meetings. And we did ask him because we were particularly concerned about the speed on College. We have seen them go 60 miles an hour down that road, and it's because that light at College is usually green for, through traffic. And so people race to make sure that they make it, and they're avoiding the traffic on Scottsdale Road. So we did not propose this roundabout. We just went to Julian and asked what we could do. We've also had contacted the police department to see if they could come out, you know, and monitor the traffic more often. But in checking back with him to see if there'd been any solutions, he brought up the roundabout to us. Now, I can tell you myself, I wasn't for it initially. I was worried about bicycles. I was worried about people crossing. But after being, after it being proposed and looking at them and having been in Sedona during rush hour at the Y and watching all the tourists cross and the bicycles go around with the amount of traffic they have at their rush hour, I didn't see a problem, and I felt a lot better about it. But we also brought it up at NTNA meetings, and I can't be sure about this, but I'm pretty sure when I put it on Nextdoor, that I put that that was one of the things we were going to talk about, because we wanted to get people's input before, we knew this public meeting was coming, and we wanted to get people's input ahead of time. And when the city put it on Nextdoor that this meeting was going to happen, I actually called up Neighborhood Services and said, are you going to send out, you know, cards? Because I wanted to make sure that everybody knew about it. And Elizabeth told me, yes, the cards, the cards were going out. They had already gone out. So just to give you a little bit of history and what our involvement was with both Papago Parkway Neighborhood and North Tempe Neighborhood Association. We certainly didn't mean to leave anybody out, but it wasn't our proposal. We were just looking for solutions. And I thank you for listening to that.
Thank you. Next speaker I have, Stan Hovey. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us under unscheduled public appearances? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close that portion. We are adjourned.